All right, Penny's out in Zoom land. Hi Penny, how are you?
I'm just good. Sorry I'm not there, but I'm there by Zoom.
So Mark's gonna take the role in your absence.
Thank you.
I am Robin Bates Mason.
Here.
Rita Batino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Jimsky here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman.
Mike Morrow. Maria Notten.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary York.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, and thank you all for making a second night this week. It would have been a long meeting if we did everything in one, one night. So I appreciate coming out tonight. So first up, we have item number two, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name, street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to total number of speakers. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to the council? All right, seeing none. Bob, do we have anybody out there with their hands raised? All good? All right. Thank you very much. Item number three, the Canaan Athletic Foundation, presentation of activities and projects. Mike Benevento and Tiger Man. Good evening, guys. Thanks for coming out. Good to see you, Mike.
See everyone. Getting very warm and comfortable in this chair. So again, thanks for having me, us. A quick reminder, I think I most know most of you. My name is Mike Benevento. I'm the chairman of the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. I'm in town 20 years. I have four kids here, have all gone through the public schools, two are currently there, two are in college. Everybody will maybe remember that the Athletic Foundation was started in 2016 with an initial project to rip and replace the surface at Dunning Stadium that had been failing at the time. That had to be replaced with private funds at the time, sort of the kickoff to the Athletic Foundation in the summer of 2016, where we raised $750,000 in the course of two weeks to get that surface replaced so that we could not, or so we could have competition in the fall and not lose Dunning Stadium due to safety reasons. The Athletic Foundation was really kicked off at that point. And we embarked on the next big project, which was Water Tower One rebuild, Water Tower Two, Three de novo turf, a complete rip and replace of the track and throwing area, complete with stadium seating, which was really the kickoff in the beginning to the public private partnership, which is the town of New Canaan with the Athletic Foundation. And then the following year, post that project, we formalized a public private partnership with the town through a memorandum of understanding. That MOU covers a number of different things, but it was basically a framework to set up what the public private partnership would be. It would define an enterprise zone. It would start to create a master plan for future projects. It also established an enterprise zone where the Athletic Foundation runs, for lack of a better term, of the fields from June 15th to August 15th for a for profit in the sense of for profit for the town of New Canaan, where we have clients come and rent the fields. And then we have a mechanism to return that money back to the town of New Canaan in two forms. I'm sorry, for that account, one form, it's basically a turf replacement account. So that we build an endowment so that we can contribute over the course of the life of those fields for when they have to be ripped and replaced the next time around. The other thing that the MOU outlines is the player use fees, which would used to come in through one of the town budgets, I don't remember, and now is collected by the Athletic Foundation, where every youth sport and recreation sport pays effectively a $25 tax on their participants. That gets paid to the Athletic Foundation. Fifty percent of it goes to the turf replacement account. Fifty percent of it goes to an enhancements account for new projects. All of these funds are kept at the, the community foundation and invested in an endowment type account. So as part of that triple P and MOU, I am required to come and talk to the town bodies once a year and report on our activities for the past year. That's the first slide in your deck. I'm going to try to be as quick as possible because that's probably not what we're here mostly to talk about today. So I just gave you a brief overview there. Again, another, what I think is a successful year of the enterprise zone activities from last summer. We were down around sixteen and a half percent to $68,165 of gross revenues. That was effectively due to, we had one less lacrosse tournament because of some scheduling conflicts. And then we also had fewer rental hours from soccer the prior year. The player use fees are being, you know, collected and distributed as planned. We're going to have roughly $98,000 this year collected for calendar 2022. We have one outstanding invoice. We think that will be settled shortly. But those have been good. That process has worked, I would say, exactly as it was intended. So the, nobody gives us a hard time. They pay that. And they feel good about the transparency of knowing exactly where that $25 tax per participant goes. It's 50% into the endowment, 50% into the enhancements account. And they feel good about that, where that dollar is going. You might all remember that Bobby Russian had been our executive director, our initial executive director, and was really the one that de novo created the enterprise zone activities. And it was him that got all of the tenants, which include, you know, Eclipse Lacrosse and Kristen Woods Lacrosse program and the outside trilogy lacrosse tournament that comes in renting to the soccer programs. It was he that ran that effectively over the last three years, I think, did an incredible job. Unfortunately, for us in the town of New Canaan, he's now the athletic director at Wilton. I will own up and say that I was a fabulous reference for him and told the superintendent at Wilton that I'm doing my town a disservice by promoting him because we are losing a crown jewel and I only hope to get him back one day. But that's great for Bobby. What it caused for us is the need for an executive director. We, in January, hired slash appoint, it's a paid position, so hired a New Canaan high school teacher by the name of John Carosa, who's also an assistant on the varsity lacrosse team for Chip Busio and an assistant on the varsity football team for Lou Marinelli. So it's an important person that is a liaison to those school or to the people that are, are tenants in the summer, but also understand how the fields operate, understand how the school operates and the scheduling conflicts that inherently pop up. And so it's good to have, in my perspective, you know, boots on the ground. So we're pleased with that. The, the, the public kickoff of the Marinelli campaign, which is really just a branded campaign. The Athletic Foundation is a fundraising organization and we're here to enhance and build facilities for, for the town. We decided that in order to execute on our master plan, we wanted to have a goal. We put $5 million out as our goal to raise. We wanted to brand that campaign in order to get people excited. Most capital campaigns get branded and in this case, we branded it, the Marinelli campaign with the intent. Again, as part of the public private partnership in the MOU, the, the Athletic Foundation technically has naming rights for certain things if we come to you and ask permit for permission. So technically, I'm also asking for permission tonight. Because the intent would be if we raised north of a million dollars in the name of Lou Marinelli, we would like to rename the Water Tower One turf, the Lou Marinelli Youth Football Complex. We've socialized that with the Board of Selectmen, with the Board of Finance, with the Parks and Rec Commission. I think with everybody I need to, although it is by charter, the town council, your responsibility, I would say, to, to, to approve that. So my intent will be to come as part of a gift with a million dollars plus and, and ask permission to rename that field this coming summer. The Lou Marinelli Youth Football Complex. It's a name that people can rally around. And to be clear, this campaign is not by any way, shape or form, a football campaign. It is just a recognized voice who was kind enough to lend his name to allow us to raise money around his name. And he's supportive of the Athletic Foundation and all sports and community, which is the mission statement of the foundation. And he was happy to do that. And we were, we were happy to, to, to take that. So we're in the midst of that campaign. It's going well. We'll talk about the gift that we intend to give this year to the town as part of our plans to, to enhance some facilities this coming summer. But that was publicly kicked off in November when we had a fundraiser, the Tuesday night before the Turkey Bowl, which I'm going to take credit for the fact that we provided the momentum to push them to a state championship. The last thing, well, I did the last bullet already. So that's my sort of 2022 year in review. I think Tiger and I have some other things to discuss tonight, but I'm happy to pause there and take questions if anybody has any.
Any questions for Mike?
One question, Mike, just on John. You know, Bobby Russian was such a great guy in terms of being able to reach out. He had so many connections in terms of getting, getting these events going. Can you give us any sense as far as will we be able to build, build that enterprise zone back up to where we had it at one point in time?
So the nice thing and really what's helpful is that Bobby created this, this thing that now we kind of have recurring tenants, right? It's Chip Busio's Eclipse program. It's Kristen's Eclipse or the equivalent of Eclipse. I forget what she is, Grizzlies?
Gold Coast.
She'd get mad if I said Grizzlies, Gold Coast. And, and they, you know, they're running their for-profit programs in the summer, their club programs, and any place to practice and, and where the best alternative for them, because the majority of their kids are locals. So that's kind of runs itself at this point. The trilogy lacrosse program or tournament is the big three-day tournament. This will be its third year. It's already signed up. Luke Green and his soccer program, again, the varsity soccer guy who runs a club program. I mean, these, these at this point are tenants that are pretty recurring. And, you know, I, I think that if we could do some more efficient scheduling, we can maybe enhance it a bit, but John's got those same types of correct or the same types of connections, given that he's a lacrosse coach and in that community and a football coach and in that community and sort of knows the people that need these activities or look for space in the summer to, to participate and or run these types of activities. So I'm pretty confident in that.
Oh, as you mentioned, one tournament is, that's a huge impact. If you lose one major tournament.
It is. It is. Yeah. And, and, and that's why I'm talking about the, the efficiency of the scheduling because as I recall, last year, it was a single day of overlap that basically caused the one tournament to have to go elsewhere because we had a conflict for one Saturday in July.
And as that enterprise zone, we've set it up where it's New Canaan, always New Canaan first, obviously. It's, you know, then you only have a certain number of weekends to, to book things. So you are limited. So we get that. But anything you could do to raise revenue, we're looking for it. So thank you.
Then, and, and that's, yeah, to be clear, if people say, well, you know, I'm not, we're not making any money, right? We are in every sense, a pass-through entity. We are, you know. So, yes, we, but we have that same goal to maximize the, the space and maximize the revenue to be able to give back to the town.
And thank you for all you're doing. All right. Next slide.
So the next slide, and I'm going to give a quick overview where, how we've gotten here. Tiger's going to help me and get into some detail around the project that's planned for this summer and then the phases going forward. And I'll talk a little bit about the master plan as we said, the Athletic Foundation defines and, and actually expanded back in the fall when we announced our, or when we had the public kickoff of the, the Marinelli campaign. The, the first thing in the master plan that we wanted to accomplish was doing a renovation or enhancement of Dunning Stadium, which hadn't been touched in, you know, I think since it really, since it had been built 30 years ago. And that encompassed a press box and a new entryway. The entryway would be a donor inclusive of a donor wall that I have been promising to all of our large donors since the beginning of the Athletic Foundation, that they, their name and their contributions would be kind of displayed in a public place. So the press box, which currently today is a trailer without a lot of equipment in it. In fact, all of that broadcast equipment that the students use gets hauled out from the high school and then sits under a tent and then hauled back into the high school for anything that they broadcast today inside of Dunning Stadium. It's not done from inside the box that you see. That's, there's a, a single computer in there and a microphone for the PA system. So we wanted to enhance that. We view it as a sort of a working classroom for people that touch athletics, but may not be athletes themselves. But, but certainly we have lots of people that are moving on to programs on the collegiate level and then ultimately careers. And that was exciting to us. And, and plus, you know, the view is the Dunning Stadium is the premier athletic asset of the town, but with this type of enhancement will become the premier athletic facility in the state, if not, you know, close to the country. And I've been to many across the country. So upgrading that press box and a new ticket booth and donor wall was the initial onset of the project. We've gone to what Tiger will refer to as a, what is it? The, like a Dunning master plan. And I don't want to confuse that with the Athletic Foundation master plan. But when we asked our architects to, to design this for us, they, the scope of the project was expanded to include things that were maybe outside of the initial NCIF directive, but I think ultimately necessary and, and would be, you know, great for the overall complex. And Tiger will get into some of the details around that because the initial budgets that we got back for everything that they want to touch around Dunning Stadium were, were far more than the Athletic Foundation certainly ever anticipated. And, and I think even the town. So what we've come here tonight to ask for is, we intend and we're, we're working and, and, you know, everybody is lockstep to put a shovel in the ground. You know, shortly after graduation to begin the renovations at Dunning, that would include for this summer, the press box, a new press box and a new ticket booth and entryway at Dunning. And you'll see renderings of this on your tablet. And the cost of that, my understanding, complete with the site work that Tiger will talk about, will be roughly $4 million. We, the Athletic Foundation, feel comfortable that we can come forward with a $2 million gift. And we're coming to ask for a $2 million match from the town of New Canaan. We've socialized that with the selectmen, with the Parks and Rec Committee, and certainly with the Board of Finance in a series of three meetings. And we will also, you know, continue with the Board of Finance in April, because my understanding is these will be bonded projects. And, and the bonding process can get, will go into April is it's not part of the operating budget. I'm going to turn it over to Tiger and, and let him go through some of the detail of that, but you all should know that's the ask. And we are working in conjunction with the Board of Finance and will present to them again in April to be, you know, to see this full comprehensive presentation, which they haven't seen quite yet, because we, we've been working through this process as we value engineered some things and then tried to phase the, the project out.
Good enough?
That's good enough, I guess. Well, thank you very much. So as Mike mentioned, what we started to look at in a holistic environment or holistically was actually Dunning Stadium, what we'd call Dunning Stadium Enterprise Zone. So this one slide is just basically the overview plan sheet. Anything in yellow is the area outside the stadium that we, we would be looking to touch. And then obviously, some different facilities inside the stadium. So I'll try to walk you through each of the plan sets, just so you get an idea. If we zoom in a little bit further, you can see some of the enhancements that are being proposed for outside the stadium. Traffic circle coming into Dunning Stadium, that's been a a concern for a number of high school parents. The new, the captain's moms came to me last year or the year before, when we were going to pave the high school lot, asking if we could do a traffic circle. It was three days before we were going to pave the, the parking lot. Not necessarily going to be able to do that at that time. I said that, but we were, you know, we would take a look at it and see what we can come up with. So this actually also helps us tie in the entire campus, meaning that you tie in the high school with the stadium, the stadium with the water tower turf, water tower turf with the tennis courts, tennis courts with the track and everything together. One of our concerns, one of the concerns that were raised to us from the Department of Justice was exactly that, the fact that the connectivity was lacking for us, right? So this is actually one of the things that's on their list. So when, when that report came through, we actually asked the the architects to come forward and bring in some of the enhancements or the, some of the requirements coming forward from that report into this plan. So this plan actually encompasses some of the work that's mandatory from that, from that other issue. So then if you look a little bit further, this kind of gives you a broad overview of, of the initial read on the plan set, since we're still in a value engineering phase and bringing everything down to a more palatable cost ratio. These, this will change slightly, but you can see that we were looking at doing something with the existing concession stand, as Mike mentioned, an entry level, putting in a new concession stand, new bathrooms, and then a new press box. The concession stand and the bathrooms will actually feed both sides. The high school side, you know, the Dunning Stadium side and the Water Tower turf side. So the thought is that you could actually make Waveney itself a secondary meat park. Like you have a meat park lodge, people go there and actually want to have dinner, you know, after their kids or before their kids' sports events. We can actually do that from outside the stadium. So even if there's nothing happening on the inside of the stadium, there's always something happening on the outside of the stadium, on the water tower turf fields or the tennis courts or the track. And the concession stand will be accessible from both sides, same as the bathrooms. So we'll actually have a bathroom facility on this side of the campus. We've got one up by the, the softball field, the girls softball field. We're going to have one down by the potting shed by the powerhouse. And this will give us another one, another anchor down on the opposite side of, of the entire athletic complex or the entire Waveney Park. And then again, a little bit, a little bit broader view of what's happening on the connectivity between the, between the two facilities being the Dunning Stadium and the tennis courts and the Water Tower turf complex. And then another look at the traffic circle and then a change in the parking. There's some loss of parking spaces associated with the traffic circle. We'll be looking at making Dunning, or excuse me, the, the, the road coming in from the high school one way. And then circle around and head back out again. It's very similar to what they're doing right now in the morning. You know, they, they come up with this through COVID as far as parent drop off. Everyone comes in now that we've opened up the access road. The opposite end of the, the campus, we can come in one way and work their way all the way out. So it actually works with the traffic flow for the high school as well for their morning drop off, which is their most, most, which is their busiest time. And then with the loss of parking here, we add some parking on the angled parking and then we're able to add some additional parking along the access road, which was originally planned on the access road. We gain another 20 spaces back. So we wind up, it's a net loss of one. So the entire work goes, comes in, everything comes in and we lose one parking space. We still might be able to fit that last one in, not necessarily, you know, up maybe on the access road, might be able to fit one more parking space up there. We should, we come up at a net zero. But then if we kind of break ourselves into Dunning Stadium itself, this gives you an idea of the, of the stadium entry with the donor wall, as Mike mentioned, off to the left-hand side. And what's, what's nice about this entry is the fact that we can actually move that, the portion that says Dunning Field on it is actually a gate. And it can be open so that we can actually bring larger equipment into service, some of the facilities on the inside. So if we've got to come in and actually service the light towers, if we got to service something else on the inside, we're actually able to move that, swing that out of the way and bring it back into place. So we actually don't have to worry about taking down fencing or doing something of that nature. When we went to go do the turf field lights, excuse me, the Dunning Field lights this year, we actually had to take down a series of fences to be able to fence lines to actually bring the, the equipment in. We won't have to do that to, to service anything on the top of, of the stadium now. So we save that, that, that concern. So this gives you an idea of what the original plan was. We were going to originally convert the concession standards to some bathrooms and then have a ticket entry and booster sale area. That came in a little bit too expensive. Plus, we were looking at the fact of how many facilities do you need? How many bathroom facilities do you need? The original thought was that the stadium seats, you know, over 4,000 people, you get four, over 4,000 people to the Turkey Bowl, you've got to have bathroom facilities for that as, as being a large area of assembly, right? So then at that point in time, the costs were actually prohibitive because you're building bathrooms that are going to be used one time a year. So then we took a look at what, how many bathrooms we would need. So we did an analysis of what is the average amount of use for a football game? That's about 1,400 people for the seven games that are there, not including the Turkey Bowl. And then what's the average use for say a soccer game or, you know, lacrosse game? That's around 300 people. So we started looking at that and then trying to value engineer the number of bathrooms we would need. And we actually went to the state building official and said that, you know, Dunning right now has three men and three women, you know, very undersized, undersized at the time it was built. So it was, you know, it wasn't built to standard at the time and it's definitely not the standard now. The state building official said, since you're coming in and you're doing a renovation, any addition is a good addition. Meaning that we weren't bound to having the number at 4,500. We weren't bound to the number at 1,400. We were bound to anything that we could improve. So we started talking to the engineer about what would be that number, you know, what would be a comfortable number so that you weren't waiting in line, you wouldn't miss the second quarter or the third quarter because you were waiting in line to go to the bathroom. So we're cut, we scaled everything down to, to, to fit that amount. So this gives you an idea of what the, the concession stand would be, leaving the existing toilet rooms in place and then adding some areas for booster club, some storage, much needed storage and some utility area. And then, as you can see, the costs dropped down substantially as we went forward with, with that idea. If we look at the press box, the press box originally came in, we were thinking of a two-story press box on, that would require an elevator. Obviously for accessibility issues. This is a view of it coming across from the, from the, from the turf field itself. And then this gives you a view up close, very, very nice, but very expensive at the same time. So this gives you a breakdown of how it was. We had coaches boxes for both, both teams and then students and then press. So you actually had two floors and then everyone had their own, had their own designated area to be able to broadcast. At that point in time, because of the cost, we looked at trying to scale the press box down to make it narrower and smaller. That was the view on the right-hand side and still keep that two-story. And it was eventually decided that we should come back down to a one-story press box. You can see how it's broken across with, with a home broadcast, the home coaches, the away coaches, student areas, and then having two bathrooms on either side. Accessible bathrooms, because the feeling is that you don't want the coaches to have to miss the third quarter start because they're still waiting to go to the bathroom. Not to mention the fact that it actually adds to our, our accessible bathroom count, which actually would help us as far as when we look to, to satisfy that need. And this gives you a view of the original concession plan as, as it looks, you can see that there's, if you look at both elevations, any of the sides, we've got access doors on both sides. So service windows on both sides of the concession stand itself. And this is, was the idea for the concession stand, all new facilities. And then again, being able to service both sides of of the stadium, the inside interior side and then the exterior side to make it more of an enterprise zone. So if they're running tournaments, if the, the Athletic Foundation is running tournaments, you can actually have the concession stand, people can come across the the parking lot, get their food and then come back out again. I think it'd be a nice, something we weren't able to do in the past and it probably would be an enhancement as far as an enhancement in revenue. Then we looked at again, bathrooms on the home side, both men's and women's. Again, the original count, you can see how many were for both sides, men and women, men, women on the left, men on the right. And then from there, we scaled it down to one building. Men and women both serviced from both sides of the, of the stadium itself. So this brings us back down. You can see there was a $600,000 savings as we started to scale everything down to a, to a more manageable amount. Then we looked at the idea of on the visitor's side, the, the student athletes every single day are having to use portlets that are stuck behind a couple of fences, right? So you can imagine a football player having to go use a portlet, you know, every day before practice or what have you, or if he's out there, he's got to stop practicing across. So it was a much needed, not just necessarily for people who are in the visitor's side, but for really everyday use for the student athletes that are out there every single day and not have to use a portlet for that. And also it was an area where we could actually have area for storage. So what we have now are lacrosse equipment, football equipment that's sitting outside 24/7 that is actually that, you know, mother nature UV light is not good on some of that equipment and actually makes it deteriorate a lot faster. So we're actually able to put it undercover. It'll last longer and we won't have to go through that. So we're actually able to put it in um undercover, it'll last longer and we won't have to go through that process of buying more um each and every year to replace. So that's been a long time ask and need from the athletic director itself for how the stadium is run. Um so we felt that it was important to add it into the uh the overall enterprise zone. Uh this changed slightly as far as the number of fixtures that are that are slated. I just don't have a a new schematic on that, but it basically scales it down, I believe, to three on either side, so three men and three women. Um and so to give you an idea of where, what every area we looked at on this, on the what we consider the enterprise zone, everything in blue, we looked at to try to value engineer back down again um to a more manageable cost and a more manageable size. So overall, this is what the project cost summary came in at from from our engineers. As you can see, the first number at the bottom thirteen point seven seven eight, that was the original cost when we threw everything out there to what Dunny would need or should have um for for a stadium of this of this type. And at that point in time, I think Mike vomited in his mouth because I did. Um so we were like, well, we can't have this, we've got to try to figure something out. So we went back, value engineered once and we came down to about a nine million dollar cost. And then we looked one more time at it again and saw what we could do to try to tweak. That's when we made the decision on the press box to bring it from a smaller two story version to a one story version. That's the difference between the two million and the three point two million. And then the only other change um excuse me, was uh in the fact that we made a small change again on the home toilet rooms, as we mentioned. Um uh once we talked to the building inspector, again, we were able to actually take a more couple more fixtures out. And then the only thing different on here at the seven point seven million dollar number is the fact that on the site work side, we removed everything that's on the outside of the stadium. So this is everything that would be on the inside of the stadium, the site work here at at one point nine five million is actually all the site work that's required for each one of these facilities. So you can imagine when we put in a new press box, I, you know, it's going to have bathrooms in it. So then I'm looking at waste piping, water piping, electrical load, things of that nature, the um uh internet fiber, things of that for uh for the broadcast itself. And then the exact same thing for a new set of home bathrooms, a new concession stand. And then uh the revision of the of the concession stand, each one requires a certain amount of site work as well as the visitor's side does, right? The visitor's side, that's a little easier. Excuse me?
You compare the visitor's side now.
But we don't like to say it's the visitor's side, right? Because it's, but it's really for the student athletes, it should just be labeled student.
Of course, Mike, outside of, you know, throwing up in your mouth, I was just wondering, what was the reasoning for like cutting this back? Because I mean, this is a crown jewel, like Friday night during football season and every other sports season is extremely important. Um
Well, some of it was the fact that we don't, it was the the number of bathrooms was trying to scale up to the forty five hundred people.
Okay.
Necessarily, it was unnecessary, right?
I started the bathroom.
So if you get down to that, the only other real breakdown in the cost at that point um comes down to the uh the change in the press box. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's a fair statement and and I would just say, you know, we're we're managing a couple of different variables here. From my perspective, I'm managing a variable of donors and and projects that they want to support.
Okay.
And we're on a an overall master plan here that is Dunning Stadium is one thing, but there are other projects, part of that master plan that also have a lot of support and and some of my constituents feel like the priorities lie in other places. You know, I've got uh people that are are uh have given or pledged restricted gifts for a new baseball facility, which we can talk about. And I've got people that think, you know, I would say collectively, most people in town that have student athletes are um desirable of more turf surface in general, right? So when we expanded the master plan to uh include turf at Saks in in November, people get excited about that, they will support that. So I am.
I'm not questioning what your comments are, I'm I'm saying like we should make this vocal point to the public to understand.
And 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 look, I I whether I I throw up in my mouth or not, I mean, that is a uh a beautiful, that would be a beautiful end project. But everything, you know, I say all the time, all it takes is money. And I'm also a fiscal conservative and and I am appreciative of taxpayer dollars and and donor dollars and what they want to support, right? So the value engineering was a term that I didn't know about, certainly, you know, six or seven years ago. And now only hear from my son, who's in construction management program. Uh you know, but somehow a finance guy knows what value engineering is now because I go through that exercise, so I can appreciate it. Um but that's really, you know, that it's like, give me the Cadillac and then let's talk about what's realistic. And everybody would love the Cadillac, but you know, there's there's resources that have to be committed. And this is the process that you go through and you listen. I listened to the Board of Finance attentively. Um and and I listened to to, you know, the private constituents, the people in town, people that are donating money. And I listened to, you know, other people that that feel like there are other projects that should be supported outside of athletics. I'm I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to that also, so it's just a process.
Okay, just wanted to know how we landed here. I think I don't think anybody that did a project wishes they did less, right? I don't think anybody that's ever done construction in their house or home or a project. It's like, you know what, I wish I would have spent less or done less or gone less. It's just to do it one time appropriately rather than in in stages probably might make sense, but it just just a conversation, wanted to just ask how we landed to how this looks.
Yeah, I mean, and and I think that's the the major change was the press box. And I can tell you, we had a a discussion about that at the Athletic Foundation Board. And, you know, our job is to basically put forward what our supporters are looking to support, right? And what their our constituents are saying. And I think what we heard from most people was, yes, it'd be great to have an upgraded press box. But what we really want to see is upgraded and additional surface for our student athletes to compete on.
Right.
Sorry, Tiger?
Yes.
The traffic circle, is that in that?
The traffic circle is not in this number? No, that was the, so at the bottom, you can see the site working grandstands at three point seven million.
Right.
And then uh and then it shows a value engineering cost of one point nine four eight. Basically, all that did was separate out exterior from interior. So the number is still a three seven. So in essence, it's not a seven seven or a seven eight. Ask it's a nine eight or a nine six, if you add that in, right? If you add in about one point eight, one point nine, I rounded everything up to um uh whole numbers, so it came up to ten million. So instead of eight million, it came to ten million, just added two more.
Um So the town's contribution is about one point eight, is that what you're saying?
We're we're not there yet.
Oh, so I have a comment concern about the one way lane. Um I go in and out of the high school a lot, I have four kids, two that have already been in and two that are gonna are in. Um so a lot of parents do drop off at that area and I know Tiger, what you're saying about that corner, it's a little bit tough. But to make that one way, and I understand you want to get all those parking spaces, it's going to put a lot more traffic into Waveney because people aren't going to be able to go out unless they can go out by the buses.
So you come, you come straight, you 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 come around the circle and you actually come through the parking lot and come work your way. And then there's only a one way section, is only the the last, the last band from the last um.
Actually.
It drives.
Why don't you put that, put that slide up?
Better because you don't have to do that. So you.
Can you put that slide back?
Out is to go through the existing parking.
For one, one portion, so. Well, let me find the slide for you.
I I just, I just wonder if there's a a way to to keep it two lanes in both areas because going through the existing parking, it's not as easy to get through when a lot of people are backing up, especially during games. So it's nice to have that other way to get out onto Farm Road.
Unfortunately, there's not enough room between, you know, there's not enough room where the driveway ends and then there's an embankment and then down at the bottom almost, there's the, there's the the track. So to try to make the, make that wider in that area would be kind of difficult from where the 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 student parking ends off to the far right of the screen and then where you come through the existing drive. So right now you can come around the circle and you head back through the the existing parking lot for one stall length or one one length and then work your way back out into a two way scenario that's just off the screen to the right hand side. Anyone else could go around the circle and head head out or come straight across and and head down into 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 Waveney proper.
I mean, you see that, but people go really fast and it just is.
This is actually a traffic coming measure, to be honest with you.
Do the parking lot getting out, so I'm just wondering if there's any way to revise it and to make the traffic circle take up less space so that other lane could be named two ways, that's just my comment.
Yeah, and I I have an, I just have an alternative, I have literally the opposite. Um so I mean, so just to have a counterpoint, uh when seeing this makes me happy because I also have a drop off and I also drop off for sports and it's a pain to have to have to go to Waveney. I kind of like the idea of being able to go around and it's also that that spot is dangerous, like people are going in the wrong way. It's like for me, I I I've I've always been thinking, what can we do to make this better? And when you, when I saw that, I actually think it's a pretty elegant solution and it would look nice too. Um and it would, it would make all of us have to go through Waveney, we could just go around and come back.
You can go around now and come back.
No, you can't, not in the morning, you can't.
You turn and you come.
Right, you have to go, well, and if everyone was doing that, that would be crazy.
My my only comment on this is, and I didn't know that traffic engineers existed.
Yeah.
Um but when we employed this plan, there was a professional hired to come up with a a the safest and most efficient traffic plan, which was a traffic engineer that I paid a bill for.
Yeah.
Which was pretty expensive. Um so I don't know anything about this other than kids drive too fast and you know, people get in accidents there and it doesn't seem particularly safe. But somebody, you know, professionally looked at it and this is what they came up with.
Narrowing it down actually creates a traffic calming effect in and of itself, so making it a one way as you come into that, it's actually going to cause people to slow. And then the, what you see also is that the crosswalks themselves are raised. So you actually have to come over them like a speed table. So you'll actually have to slow as you come through the circle. If you wanted to head into Waveney, you're going to have to come over it a a a speed table. So you have to slow to come over the speed table to then come down between the parking lot, between the turf fields and the stadium itself. And then halfway along, there'll be another raised walk there, which actually joins the walkway that goes into the Water Tower turf fields with the Dunning Stadium. So there'll be a raise, there'll be a speed table there as well, so you won't get the speeding that you're getting during the summer. The Athletic Foundation and others are actually having to put out speed bumps throughout there, I don't know if you've seen them during the summer, but they're, you know. And then all that happens there is that if you don't have any parking in the stalls, people just use it as a raceway and kind of go, you know, S turn through it. Um this will avoid that, so that should actually slow it down. I I I'll ask the traffic engineer, Mike, you know, Mike mentioned that it was SLR engineers, they did a nice job on this and it's in the one down below. I know it's been an ongoing question or concern for parents um for quite a long time, especially on the pickup at the end, because everyone comes out of the gym and then walks walks their way across, right? So the thought is that, well, it doesn't show it here in the plan, but we're looking at a series of knee walls so the kids can actually have someplace to sit while they're waiting for their parents to come up. But if you look at that whole area, that whole area, even though I paved it within the past two years, is still already chewed up because everybody pulls on top of the grass, it ruins the curb and does whatever. Um for obvious reasons, because they're trying to get their children, but I think that this works quite well. Um I I don't think I can expand it any further to to the top of the screen, only because I'm going to get into a large retaining wall running all the way along that edge. And um I don't think I can bulb it out to make it work and actually transition well enough. So as you're driving, it'll feel comfortable to try to maneuver your way around, but we can certainly take a look and see.
Yeah, I I appreciate the traffic engineer, the money he spent. It's just going in and out of there and then in the area where it says existing parking with the slanted parking. If that, if people are dropping off at Water Tower two and three and then have to come through the roundabout and the only way they can get out is through existing parking. Little kids are running in and out of cars, big cars and they can't see what's going on versus the road. There's much better visibility for people going in both directions, so I appreciate it's it's a solution. But I think it could create maybe an unintended safety issue, but I'm not a traffic engineer.
Fine, I'll ask him to take a look at it. We have, we have other areas very similar to this elsewhere. And thankfully, to this point, we've never had a problem. We have the exact, we had the exact same concern at the time when we put in the uh the pull off spaces outside the pool, along the soccer fields, the gravel ones that are outside the dog park area. We did that fifteen years ago and that was the original concern, that parent was going to back out and hit a child. Thankfully, to this day, we haven't had an issue. I think it's, you know, I think everyone understands that it's a, that's a very busy area, it's a school, it's a park, but um I'll ask him to take another look. So uh you know, I thought it was an elegant plan myself. Yeah. Um but to get back to the overall you know, cost or what have you.
For that, I have a question with the bathroom, so.
Sure.
So that's, so I was just confused because it was first, it's it's three now, three on each side now.
Three on each now, yeah.
And then it went up to whatever.
All traffic, the overall, the overall, sorry, the overall toilet count or facility count varied, so I don't know exactly right now off the top of my head.
But now for the final.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's.
I thought you were saying it's back to three.
No, it's not, no, it's it's still three and three, but any improvement is an improvement. But if we look at as we go forward, what do we need? We're trying to get to the point of of something of a of a good mix between the average soccer game and the average football game.
So yes, I guess I'm just trying to understand, so you don't know, there isn't necessarily, you don't have a count.
I have a count, I just don't have it in front of me. Um as to what this plan entails, I just don't have that number in front of me, sorry. The um because it's gone through so many different iterations. Um all we were told by the building inspector, the chief building from the state, was that any improvement is a good improvement.
And the only reason I'm asking is if we're at the same number, then have paying eight hundred and seventy four thousand, just seems, that's just.
We're not at the same number.
That's all, that was my only question.
That home toilet rooms for eight hundred and seventy four thousand?
Yeah.
Is an entirely new building of bathrooms.
Yeah, for the home ones.
For the home ones, yeah. So if I go back up and tell you what that that schematic looks like, you can actually count it.
I counted.
Did you?
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven, thank you, twenty seven overall, so.
Including the ones on the visitor's.
Including the ones on the visitor's side, so you add on twenty seven more facilities with this plan in place at the at the at the ten million dollar mark, you add in twenty seven more facilities. There's, you know, it's skewed to the women, but.
As it should be.
As it should be.
That's what it's correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
No problem. The uh.
Tiger, is is a plan for the press box still to be like a flat roof?
Yes.
Okay.
The the, but the problem that we have with that is that if we, to try to utilize the uh home bathrooms, one, two, three, four, eight, eight women's, two men and two urinals. So you've got actually, there's a family one also, and then and then the family one on the outside, right? So you get, you get a family one as well, so you get accessible on uh for men and women, accessible family room. Um non gender specific and then one, two. Um like I said, two, two urinals, two uh.
It's an improvement.
For much, much better improved, yeah. The um, sorry, Steve, you asked the question on the press box?
Yeah.
So the the press box, um as again, we started off with a two story and then we worked our way down to this version on the left. So that the idea of trying to utilize the 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 roof, if you wanted to use the roof, it becomes an accessible space. So I've got actually, you know, that was why on the two story version, we had an elevator to get to the second floor. We even looked at the possibility of having the the press box be look like it was wider on the bottom and then come in. So it's got shoulders on either sides to actually have an exterior view, so you can come to the outside. That's still an accessible space, I still need the elevator to the second floor. If I try to utilize the top of the press box, it would be considered to be an accessible space and I would have to find some way to get either via ramping or an elevator to that space, so.
So you have to make it ADA if you.
I would have to make it compliant, yeah.
As a reason I asked the question was, it would there be a way to build it one story with a support for a possible addition down the road for a second?
Asked that question, that's a great question. We did ask that question of the of the um of the architect and the engineer and it is possible to try to see what we can do. It becomes a little bit different in the configuration and how you would break it out right now because of the way they're trying to fit everything in um for home and away, you know, for the coaches and for the uh um for uh for the students as far as their um as far as um their broadcast, it gets a little bit different. As you can see on the on the two story version, the um the rooms are a little bit, they're about the same size, but you're you're kind of separated, right? So we would wind up having it cut up a little bit differently.
Um Well, because the reason, at one point, we were talking about a possibility of revenue generating space uh where, you know, if you pictured in modern day and I you use a pro sport to compare it, but like a luxury box where you'd be able to raise money for, you know, at times be able to rent that space out. And it was, that space would probably pay for itself pretty quickly if you were able to pull it off, because there's plenty of plenty of folks who like to feel special and would love to be able to be in a warm climate watching a game, so.
That was my thought, that's why originally I thought about the shoulders on the press box, being able to have that extra area, because I thought it would be a nice selling point.
Even even during, even during when you rented to tournaments and soccer games and there, you you think about how much inclement weather there is over there. I mean, it's, it would be um at least worth down the road. I'm not talking about right now, but at some point, there's money to be made there.
I think a hundred percent, I think business wise and financial wise, and I don't want to throw drag this conversation out longer than it has to be. Um big supporter of anything athletic, uh just on the record, um especially Dunning, love the field. Um is, I I think it's a the end user, I think people would love to have that. Uh Steve, you know, um I mean, look at the Turkey Bowl, you have to get online, you can't buy two tickets and the line is at the high school of for three hour wait. I mean, it's not like the demand isn't there. I think providing a service to the need of the the community is. Is key and I think it's, it's, it's also could be very beneficial financially to the town.
Everybody has their own opinion, but I just need to chime in with mine. When I first saw the two, the rendering of the two-story press box, I thought. These people think like they're living in the whiz, in Oz. I mean, it's such conspicuous consumption. That's just the visceral reaction that played to me. They're trying to look like they're Notre Dame, you know, to, to, to the extent that what we do is. Is driven by discipline and functionality, functional needs and delivering a great functional space. For what we're doing to me, that would make a better impression than showing off, you know, that, that's just my thought.
I wanna ask, oh, go ahead. No, Tiger, I. Thanks, Mike and Tiger. The, the minds on, on the. The value engineering, the proposed, the seven point seven six.
Mm-hmm.
Just kinda how, how, how we got to that number, what? Um, you know, is it, you said you had some company look at it. I, I mean, I think, I think.
Engineering firm do the entire analysis. There was probably over a hundred pages that they came forward with. As to how they looked at costing out everything that was here.
Right.
So it wasn't like back of the envelope. There was actually, you know, we had, we had a, an, a, a firm that actually specializes in that. Take a look at the plan set and tell us exactly how much the cost would be.
So, I mean. So when you bid this out, we shouldn't be.
We're hoping, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I think, I, I. I think we've got a lot of things going on right now. So I think.
I understand. The uh, I can only tell you that, yeah, based upon, you know. The, the plans that, that they had at present, this is what their cost analysis is and they're, they're typically a little bit conservative on it. But also, we're not looking at an entire amount at present for um, um, the one. The one year, right? You know, we're looking to phase it in. What I didn't do in the phasing was actually add in the cost of, you know, a, an escalator in that. I'd have to, you know, but I, I kinda rounded every single number up to a whole number, you know, see being that. If it was one point eight, rounded it to two, saying, okay, that's gonna be, give me a little bit of cushion on my uh, my cost of living, you know, as far as inflation goes. Um, but yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't back of the envelope. This was done by a firm.
So, so the contingency is you just became extremely conservative with your number.
Hmm. I would still add a contingency on top of it just.
Okay, I understand. So, but there would be one on top of that.
Uh, yeah, at present, yeah. Uh, you know, I'm, it, it, the um. I, I believe so. I'd have to come back and say, okay, you know, the first year, no, I'm, I'm confident in the numbers that are there. You know, we would add from the bid, you know, whatever the bid number came in at, I would add a contingency to that, just so that we had leeway, just in case there was, there was a change order or two. Um, but where the numbers stand at, at the ten million dollars, no, I think we're okay, you know, at present. Might have to look at the year three and year four. I don't know how this year's gonna go and I'm next year's gonna go as far as, you know. Um, the economy itself, you know, our costs are up, but some costs are up, some costs aren't, you know, some costs we're getting killed on, some costs we're not. You know, asphalt went up. Uh, seventeen dollars a ton for Holland Light. That's a pretty good marker and have that marker since two thousand and eight. Two thousand and eight, when I was about that number, everything else after that was about a dollar a year. So, you know, I, I don't know. Yeah.
Right, no, that was exactly what I wanted to ask, but to play off that, so what I wanna understand is what exactly is it that is being asked for in the funk? The process here of who's funding what and how much, right? We have two million from the foundation, there's two million asked, there's a seven point seven million dollar number. Some of it's foundation, some of it should be borne by the town. So what is exactly, are we all being asked to eventually?
That's next slide.
That's a great question because that was the next slide. Mike, that's when we were gonna get to.
Can I ask something that I think is a bit of a preamble to that?
Sure.
And just before we get to, to what the ask is, how did you come up with your priorities for what needs to be done first? So it looks like if we go to this slide, which I think you're about to go, which will go into your ask, it looks like the press box is the first priority. And so how was that decided instead of say the bathrooms or?
Yeah, well, the, the thought was that the, as Mike mentioned in the beginning, the original concept from the Athletic Foundation was that it was. Or an enhancement for the press box, right? Um, so that's why we kept that as number one. Um, well, when we were at the board of finance level. Speaking of them, um, they felt that safety was a big concern, specifically about the traffic circulation on the outside.
Okay.
So that's why that one became number two.
Okay.
Um, and then got down to. The fact that if we're gonna enhance the stadium, you know, do we need an enhanced concession stand or do we need an enhanced bathrooms? And since you've only got three and three, and at that point in time, we're saying to the state building official. We're gonna come forward with a multi-phase plan. I'm not gonna put the bathrooms last, put the bathrooms third, you know? And then concession being the last. So that was the overall thought when uh, when I developed the slide.
Okay.
Um, here as far as the overall ask and how we were phasing it in, it doesn't have to go in this, you know? But the thought was that, the, the, the original thought from this, from the, uh, from, sorry, from the Athletic Foundation was that. It was a press box improvement area. Um, and then when we actually got into it and said, okay, well, what is, you know, what does Dunning need? You know, what does it really need? And that's really what happened was you come down, if you're gonna go through the exercise, let's go through the exercise, right? And that's why the plan came to what it is. When you bring all the players in and say exactly what you need or what should happen at the stadium, if we're going to do it. And that's, that was why this, this enhanced overall plan of this enterprise zone came to, came to be, but it started off literally as a press box enhancement program.
Um, and then so.
Excuse me.
Mike's question.
Right.
Can I ask one more since on the, on the design of this? The um, Dunning Stadium entry in the picture, it looks really high and behind it, it looks like the two-story press box.
That's because that was the original schematic.
Right, will that entry come down in relation? So it'll.
It'll still be that, it'll still be that. Yeah, the, the, the original rendering had the two-story, you know, press box in it. You know, the, I, we didn't ask them to do another rendering to show any of the value engineering changes we had.
But that stadium entry won't look like it's looming.
It won't loom over. We asked that, that's a great question. We asked that of the uh, of the architect of uh, TLB and Richter and Seegan and um. They didn't feel that it would, it would uh, you know, loom over anything else. Um, I think there's a little foreshortening, you know, in that as well, based upon, you know, your perspective in here.
And is that usable space at all in that upper?
The lower part.
The lower part, not the upper part, but the upper part is not necessarily, you know, you're looking at more of a facade than necessarily an entire build out. Um, and that was, that was value engineered down as well. We actually had a booster area. We had a ticket, an enhanced ticket window. Um, better, you know, sales for um, for gear, so to speak. And that got, that got sized down as well, a, a good portion of it got actually removed. Um, and then the thought was that we would uh, we try to house that inside the, the revised concession stand. So instead of the concession stand changing over to all bathrooms, that went to the area where we're gonna have a booster sales and things of that nature. Uh, and as well as some uh, some facilities, the, the existing facilities would remain.
I have one quick question. Page twenty-three, it says vehicle storage. What's that for?
That's, that's on the visitor's side. So on the visitor's side, there's a, you know, the athletic department has a couple of gators. So that's a, that's the overall thought.
They're like big golf carts.
Right, so.
Well, so the athletic train.
Sorry, it's a golf cart.
Trainer has one and.
They keep them now.
What? They're out, they're out in the, they're sitting out and the majority of them, there's actually two on the top of the stadium right now. So they don't, they don't have any place to store them.
They're parked under the.
Are they?
They're parked under the entrance.
Okay, they're parked in the.
Stadium right now.
So they don't. Still in the elements, but you know, I've, yeah, last time I saw was in the middle of the patio, the uh. But yeah, that's, that's a vehicle storage. It's not necessarily for a truck or anything of that nature. No, it was more for their, for their, for their golf carts, for the trainers. Things like that for Jay to, to move through the facility. Yeah. Um. So to get back to the, to the ask, it's a Mike's question, um, the thought was, uh. And this kinda came from the board of finance level as well, which was, what exactly are you asking for and how do you wanna see it? And, and uh, how do you see that breaking out? Between the town and the Athletic Foundation. And uh, I put this on a budget sheet, our normal budget sheet, and then I just broke it down. So. In essence, this, if you looked at our normal budget sheet, it would just be the left-hand side and the right-hand side, combine them together. Um. So that the overall thought for this year was the fact that we were looking for an overall four million dollars. Um, so we were looking at a one point seven five million of bonded capital that coming from the town. And then there's two point two five million coming from in the other category, the other category being two million dollars from the Athletic Foundation. And then two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA, which is what the board of finance had suggested at the time. Um, to, to then make that four million dollar ask. If we look at the overall for the next four years, five years. Uh, outlay, um, based upon discussions with the board of finance, they felt that the circulation, the, the out, the, the exterior work. Um, on the high school campus and on the Waveney campus should all be funded by the town. As should any enhancements to the bathrooms, the visitor bathrooms or the home bathrooms should be provided by the town, uh, given the fact that. Uh, it's hard for the Athletic Foundation, if you can imagine, to try to fundraise for a traffic circle or for a bathroom. Nobody wants to put their name on a bathroom. So the, the overall thought is that.
Toilet.
Um, depends on who you are, but you know, if you're Scott Paper, maybe, you know, you might, maybe you wanna do that, the um. But so, and then you get down to the concessions and in the end of the concessions, at that point in time, since there, there can be an argument made that it might benefit both, both uh.
Yeah.
Both uh, um, groups, you could, you could look at a fifty fifty split at that point in time. I don't wanna speak for Mike, but the uh, but again, the same thing. Comes to play in that, the concessions both benefits Dunning Stadium and then benefits the town by having an additional area. For their townspeople to come and eat and gather, just like me lodge, I think me lodge was, is still fantastic facility. Um, so I think that having an, an extra one, because me, you know, Emod is busy, you know, you, you go there and sometimes it's a long wait. Um, to have an additional facility at Waveney would be nice.
Sorry, and it's also revenues for when you have events coming in, that's additional profession revenues. I think, I mean that, yeah.
So the argument can be made either way on that last, that last portion. Um, but for the first year, looking from the, looking at the breakdown, be two million dollars from uh, the Athletic Foundation. Two millions, two million dollars from the town, one point seven five bonding and two hundred and fifty from uh, from ARPA.
Mark.
So then, and then uh, if we looked at the value engineering aspect, um. If we looked at that, it basically breaks down to uh, the, the ticket booth, what we consider the ticket, which is the entryway. Um, yeah, the press box and then the site work. Um. You know, as well, and in there as well, it says site work in grandstands. It should be noted that. Part of this as well will take into account the concern from the DOJ, as far as Dunning Stadium has accessible seating down at the bottom. Nothing necessarily up on the top. The DOJ wanted to see some accessible seat. You're supposed to have accessible seating throughout, interspersed throughout a large area of assembly. We don't have that, be very, very difficult to construct that. And they said that if we could actually build. Some at the top level, meaning along the rail, and then have some at the fifty yard line right in front of the new press box. That would satisfy their concerns. So that's why it says site work in grandstands. There's approximately sixty-five thousand, maybe hundred thousand dollars worth of work. That's associated with that work that needs to happen as part of the DOJ. Um, that'll give us some accessible seating in front of this, front of the press box and then on either side. So it's interspersed throughout and um, along the entire uh. Along the entire grandstand.
Okay, I have a question. You know, so Tiger, the, of the ten point three. Um, at the bottom, what, what percent, what percentage of that money is gonna be town versus Athletic Foundation?
But.
But I realized there's a.
It's, it's either an eighty, twenty or seventy, thirty, depending upon how you break it out. And that's a really hard one, you know, because it's not really an ask from the Athletic Foundation.
Right.
You know, per se.
I understand.
Right, it's really, yeah, I, you know, I commend the Athletic Foundation because they brought this forward and said, hey. This is necessarily, this is what we're hearing. This is necessarily a need for, you know, for the facility, but it's not necessarily their purview. You know, circulation on the, you know, in, in and around there and bathrooms and things of that nature that necessarily might have been, or should have been built at the time. Stadium was put together, not necessarily their uh, their bailiwick. So it's a little unfair. You know, if you really look at it, it's a fifty fifty, you know, because you're looking at, for this year, it's four million, so it's two million and two million, it's a fifty fifty share. You know.
Got it. Can you talk about the three hundred thousand that we committed to and how that plays into this?
So the, we've had two years of, of three hundred thousand, um. The first fiscal year, three hundred thousand went to the design phase for this, right? So paid for the engineers and the architects for this, and then about fifty thousand helped offset some of the costs from the um. Uh, from the lights themselves, the Dunning Stadium lights, um, of which the, the. The, I keep wanting to say the conservative, I'm sorry, the Athletic Foundation, um, paid a portion of that as well. Especially for some of the enhancements, the enhanced lights, you know, that, that were in the, the light show. That was paid by, by the, by the foundation itself. Um, so, you know, in essence, this project's actually been going on for well over a year, if not two years. Because we, you know, it was fiscal twenty, uh, twenty-one dollars that went into the original design. We have some monies left over. Um, that, um, I'm feeling we should keep for additional seed money for additional projects moving forward. Be at the, be at the baseball fields, you know, um, at Lapham. And then if we needed a, a little bit of extra. Based upon how the numbers come in, we wouldn't have to come back to ask. That's why I'm asking for a full, you know, two million for um. For this uh, for this fiscal year at one, seven, five and two fifty, but it's, it's a net one, seven, right? Because we were asking for three hundred, but we had a three hundred thousand dollar marker in there. So it's a one point seven additional. And then I carry that, I keep that out of the equation for the, for each column, A, B, C and D. And then when we get to the fiscal twenty-eight year, I put it back in again, just to show the juxtaposition. And at that point in time. You know, we'll see exactly what the Athletic Foundation has on, on, on the horizon.
So when the board of finance met and I see Amy, Amy Carroll's here tonight, but.
Come on, I, I'm getting tired of not having you here. You know, you've been here, you know, three years in a row, it's getting good.
On the board of, when the board of finance met, they talked about putting a pin in, um, and the pin num, the pinned number in the budget right now is.
Was two.
Two, okay.
I think it was two, right? It was a two million dollar pin. There's a.
With, with this calculus though, the two fifty from ARPA and the.
Right, yeah. And they're just, they're, the, the only thing that they had in there was that the two fifty that we have currently. In the, you know, as to whether or not that's in play or not in play. So, you know. I'm hoping that they say it's not in play and that they'll go to the one point seven five million, or if it's in play, then it will just, we'll have to utilize that money. Won't have any seed money to move forward and we'll go from there. But they had a two million dollar pin. So in essence, what you're looking at is exactly that.
Okay, thank you. Only question I have here is among many. Is just a thought, you know, essentially under a five-year capital, we'll have five years' worth of construction going on over in that area. You know, I'm, I'm not suggesting bringing it all on and down ten million dollars now, but that's just something we all need to consider. For the next five years, it's gonna be a constant something going on there, that, you know.
Yes.
I don't know with. School and them being involved in all of this, whether that's, you know, an appealing kind of scenario.
Well, the uh, the thought is that the, the um, the overall tent just can't be performed in one, one go, uh, in the fact that. We have a very narrow window to work in the stadium, right? So in some of the work, we could actually do outside of the, of the narrow window of the, the summer months. Um, the two million dollars for the circulation has gotta be done in the summer months. It just, it can't be done any other time. And this season, um, we're already committed to doing a couple of those schools. And then what I'm, what I'm hearing from contractors out there is there's just not a palette to, to be able to take that on. That's what, one of the reasons why that went to an out year. Um, and then looking at the other ones, in essence, they're almost, if we, if we take into account and are able to take in a, a lot of the site work now. The disruption is a lot less and the timeframe is a lot less and we can actually have everything in place, ready to go the moment June fifteen rolls around or, or right when. Right after graduation and then hit it. And we might have a little bit of construction heading into the first part of the first couple of games in September. But we should be out of the way. Um, if we tried to do it all in one shot, we would be throughout the entire season. We, it would be under, it would be under construction and would, it would not, I don't think it would play well. Um, so that was the other reason why to kinda, you know, and granted, there is an additional cost as, as Mark mentioned, you know, as far as if we put it out in a couple of years. You know, as far as inflation, but um, the only thing I could, I could see doing would be um. Three phases, meaning you get the press box done and all the site work done this year, put it to bed. Circulation next year and then the following year, you do the bathrooms and the storage, uh, both bathroom sets in the concession stand. Because the bathroom is right next to the concession stand, the home bathroom is right next to the concession stand, lends itself to wanna be done right at that moment, instead of an extra phase. So I could see that phase being combined. So a, a four, two, four, so to speak, instead of a four, two, two, two.
All right, thanks. Tiger, could you just clarify the, the two million of pin? So is that's operating?
No, that's capital.
So that's instead of the million seven fifty, I'm lost.
No, they, they said that they put a pin in basically saying, we're, we'll, we'll be looking to give you two million dollars is what they said. That's what, that was their, you know. The pin number. So that, that pin number breaks out to be one point seven five million of bonded and two hundred and fifty thousand of ARPA. For this fiscal year. That, right, that's what I was saying. It's either including the two fifty that was bonded from last year, or we're hoping that they'll give us that two fifty from last year and add an extra quarter million.
And what the, and what the Athletic Foundation is saying, so they're, they're coming up with two million too. So it's.
They're coming up with two million as well. That's correct. Right.
So we have. The one point seven five.
Oh, I got you.
Includes two fifty, that's already.
No, so it's two million total, two fifty from last year, two fifty of our sum and then.
So it'd be one point five bonded.
Right, but, but yeah, my thought is to, to ask the board of finance to actually allow that two fifty from this fiscal year to, to reside. And actually make the ask one point seven five for this fiscal year instead of the one point five. That's, that's my thought, is to then see, you know, based upon showing them where we are specifically on the site work, cause the site work is one of the things, I, I don't want to break open the, the patio twice. You know, I don't want to dig it twice, I'd like to.
That would be no Arpa then, no.
No, the Arpa would be included in that as well, so it'd be. It's just whether or not they're going to include what we have in this fiscal year.
Okay.
Or they're going to say this fiscal year was already done, and for fiscal twenty four, we'll give you an entire two million, two hundred and fifty from Arpa and one point seven five. Their original thought was, as Josh mentioned, one point five, two fifty, two fifty, two fifty, we already have. Um, but I, you know, given the fact that that. Makes it a little bit harder on the site work, you know, and might make it that I gotta break something open twice, I don't really want to, you know. I don't want to break open the patio twice, I think it's, you know, I don't want to spend money one time after another.
Yeah.
You know, I've done highway jobs like that for the DOT and I can't stand it, they're called transition plans and they, you know, all you do is spend money trying to transition to the next. Phase, if you combine them together, you save millions of dollars in the end, on the DOT side.
You had me, I don't like to break things.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, so Christina has a question out there?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, Steve, I just wanted to ask, I, I'm a little concerned by the way that the. Uh, phasing of the project is presented, primarily because it, you said on one, on one side, the. Athletics Foundation wants to do and has been wanting to do the press box, but the urgency on the town side is complying with ADA. And based on the fact that DOJ did the inspection and that we do need to bring it up to code. I just don't understand why you don't have that up as number one, because that's basically an infraction.
The, the stadium enhancements are included in the press box. The stadium enhancements required or by the DOJ are included in the four million dollars, in, in, included in the work that slated for this year.
But it's not the bathrooms, it doesn't include the bathrooms.
Doesn't include the bathrooms, the DOJ didn't mention the bathrooms, all they mentioned were the grandstands, um, the, the accessible seating had nothing to do with the bathrooms themselves. And we have a three year timeframe, two to three year timeframe for the Department of Justice to satisfy their concerns.
Well, that being the case, um, I'm also wondering why you would um. Downgrade the number of bathrooms that you need in total, because it's based on maximum occupancy.
It's, it, because you'd be, you, the, the thought is that you would have a bathroom that would be utilized once a year. Um, it might be utilized more, but in essence, everyone, every bathroom would be utilized once a year, so the thought, when we spoke to the state building official, the state building official was of the, of the. Of the feeling and of, of the determination that any improvement to the stadium is an improvement to the stadium, so if we added one fixture, that would be considered an improvement and a betterment.
The DOJ doesn't look at it that way, so I would recommend that you go back to DOJ and ask them before you go down the path of downsizing of their bathrooms. And then we have to do some more construction later on.
The Department of Justice doesn't get into the number of fixture counts for the, the assembly area, they get into, they would get into the types that you have and then the requirements thereof, so I have to have at least one for a certain number. And move out, move our way forward, as I add, then I have to add accessible. Uh, but they don't get into fixture count as far as how many are need for, for an assembly area, I will certainly ask our, our consultant that question, but I don't, I think I'll get the exact same answer.
Um, I, I respectfully disagree, but you check, that's, that would be fine. Um, the other thing was the five year capital breakdown that you show, it's not clear that, it shows that the town. Has a four million, two, two and two million dollar. Um, line item on the five year capital plan, but it doesn't say anywhere that there is a contribution or a matching. And I'm wondering, why don't we just put the amount that the town would be responsible for?
Well, it, so on the budget sheet itself, on the top is the breakdown of where the, where it would come from, so the one point seven five and the two point two five from other. I didn't put an asterisk in because the, but the two point two five from the other is actually two hundred and fifty from Arpa and two million from the Athletic Foundation. What's not shown here is I, I wasn't able to on the, on the slide, show you that, that, the Excel sheets that we actually create and the, and the backup detail sheets that you get in your budget book. That I can send to you, actually show the breakdown and where it's coming from and why, so on, on. The first year, you know, twenty four tells you exactly the breakdown and where it's coming from, all the way out through, I, I did one for each year, so for twenty four, twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. I did one for each and I'm happy to share, it's just difficult on a, on an, on a, on a PowerPoint.
I understand that, but I, I would like to be more clear that it's not ten million, three hundred thousand for the town putting on the five year capital plan, it's less than that.
Okay, thank you, the, the only other problem that we have is that from our side and from the charter side, we actually have to show the entire amount, because that's the amount that we're actually going to be authorized to spend. So if I just show the two million that's coming from the town, I don't get, I would have to come back to every single board to ask for the additional amount of money added to the project. For our, that's, that's for our, our charter, so I would actually, so that's why we put it in as an overall four million dollar and a breakdown of two million, two million. So that we wouldn't have to come back for that additional step, so that, that's the part of the Bach Amendment, it's part of a couple of other things that we have, that's why it's shown. On the financial side, it's only, you know, looking at the fact that. At present, basically, I said to Mark either seventy thirty, so either a seven million, three million. Or an eight million, two million breakdown between the town and the Athletic Foundation and that, that uh, you know. That, that only relates to how the concession stand is broken out as to whether or not it's an entirely town function or a. Town, shared, shared responsibility between the town and the Athletic Foundation. But it's, it's difficult to show it on the slide, but it, it is broken down on Anne's side as to exactly where it comes from, but we actually have to have the authorization complete. If I don't have the authorization, authorization complete, I can't spend that money.
You, you okay out there, Christina?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I, I just want to go back to my, put a bow on it, but going back to the question I asked, so. The, the ten million. It's in the, the Board of Finances understands that it's seven to eight million dollars committed over the next.
The, we have not, we have not, you're actually seeing this first compared to them, we're out of, a little out of sequence because of where they were, so they put. For this year, they were looking strictly for this year and told us to come back on April eleventh, and on April eleventh would be the actual. Authorization of the bond for the spending for this year, at that point in time, we're gonna. We'll be showing them the exact same deck that you just saw, the slideshow that you saw with this breakdown, cause they said, okay, what are we looking at over this timeframe, break it down for us. And we just happen to be in the budget cycle, so you're, you're first. Um, so we'll go to them on the eleventh of April and then come back to you on the nineteenth. Nineteenth of April for, you know, um, if it's approved at the Board of Finance level, it'll come back to you for an authorization on the nineteenth of April.
Good, all right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's wrap it up, thank you very much, guys, I really appreciate it, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Mike.
And Mike Murphy's here too, Mike, thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Tiger, you're gonna do double duty tonight?
Uh, I'm, I'm in for the whole long haul.
All right. Yeah, anybody wants to stretch, but item number four is coming up, we have the Playhouse update, review and update of the Playhouse renovation.
Anybody want to?
Take a stand up and anything, or just keep on going.
And I'm gonna recuse myself.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We're not going to do nothing there.
She's still accusing herself. But you're lawyer. You got to be a.
Is it on the thing?
Forrest.
We can't see. It's easier.
Any of you camping?
We don't. Put it on the screen, okay, well, because we have it on her.
But you got it on your tablets, okay, that's fine, I just want to know, it's just, you know. Everybody, it's on, yeah, so.
Yeah, but it's being broadcast, so.
Maybe we see it, so. But we, yeah, yeah, is there any way to? See Penny and Christina and.
Then you won't be able to read the number. Then you can't read the numbers on the screen.
Okay.
So that was a no then?
So you have to put it up and.
Hmm? Is that a no or is that a yes?
Well, I think, I think at home, it's helpful if people are watching, so they can see the numbers, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me, let me.
Not that we don't want to see Penny and Christina, we'll make sure we, raise your hands if you need us. All right, Bob, are we ready, we coming back on here? Oh, good, okay, all right, so we're back, took a little break there, uh, this again is item number four on our agenda, it's the Playhouse update, gonna review and update the Playhouse renovation project. And again, Hillary uh, has recused herself, so Tiger, we are ready to roll.
All right, so, um, well, thank you, the uh. Almost everyone got to take the tour.
Yes, thank you for that.
Right, so, um, which I think was very helpful, um, so. When we, when we went through the tour, Carl Rothbart, our, our architect was able to kind of spell out exactly, um. What's transpired from the uh, uh, from the Playhouse as we began from in May of uh, twenty one, when we got our initial estimate of construction. Um, as to what it would be, the scope has changed dramatically, um, because the thought of what, how the, how the facility is going to be used has changed dramatically, plus our knowledge of the facility has changed. Um, dramatically from what we had originally, you know, to give you an idea, the building was built, you know, a hundred years ago. And the structural drawings don't coincide with what's actually in the building. So our structural engineer is actually was having a very, very difficult time determining exactly what was going on with the structure without actually demoing the interior, we wouldn't have been able to know that. Even up to the point where yesterday morning, we were core drilling parts of the second floor to find out exactly what was happening, we knew that there was a seven to eight inch slab of concrete. But it's three feet thick, so what's happening in that area, we know there's just concrete on the bu, above, concrete down below, what's in that void? Is it all full of concrete, is it not, is there beams in there, is it just a void space, so, and that wasn't reflected in the, in the, in the drawings, so.
From the nineteen eighty renovation?
Some of it, yeah.
When they started, you know, they started doing some renovations and nobody has the plans for those.
Right, yeah. Exactly, and some of it was, you know, just they butchered the building during those renovations as well, so. The fact of the way that we approached the building as far as a design build and having to go in and then do some, do some selective demos or a lot of demo. Um, helped us in the end, learn exact what the building is, and then again, the same thing is when we started the original, um. Uh. Some idea or the budgeting for it, we were looking at one type of entity being in there, so very similar to what was existing bowtie. And now we're at a point where the entire facility will be utilized, it'd be, you know, you're gonna have event space on the top floor, you're gonna have a bar on the bottom with concessions, both, both, both theaters will be running. Um, hopefully, um, full, uh, at both times, so that the overall aspect of the building has changed, um, quite a bit. Um, so as, as Carl walked you through, you know, we talked about the fact that. Um, we had to, in essence, gut the interior, we had problems with the fact of where to utilize the bathrooms, originally, we thought we'd put the bathrooms on the second floor with, with an elevator. Um, it was better to put the bathrooms on the first floor, there came in, into an issue of, of the utilization of the balcony. We weren't able to utilize the balcony because we couldn't get accessible seating there, we couldn't get an access point to it, we tried to put a, um. A, a point, an, an extra stop in the elevator, eighteen inches higher than it started at, only because you would come in, come up eighteen inches and then come out into the theater. That didn't necessarily work either to try to get us out onto the balcony space, so the thought was at that point in time. To remove the balcony space and utilize it for the second floor, um, which then actually helped us, um, with a little bit of spacing up above for the, for, um. Giving us headspace to then utilize, put a third floor in so that we didn't have to actually put the HVAC system on the roof. Um, cause the roof load can't handle it, and if we actually tried to structurally enhance the roof, it would be more expensive than it would be to put the third floor in and put the HVAC system on the inside. So Carl kind of walked you through that entire scenario. And as, um, the project progressed from one aspect to the next, as far as how we were trying to attack it and, and satisfy. All the codes that were required, not just necessarily the HVAC code, but the accessibility code, the building code, what have you, we're working within inches of what's available. And what's necessary as far as where we are, so doing the demo itself was probably the best scenario we had. In speaking to both the contractor and, um, the architect, they said if we had gone out with the original plan set as to how we, what we wanted to do. We would have gotten eaten alive, um, with everything that's going on, every single time they would have had to stop and then look at it, do some, do some additional work. Do some structural analysis, do uh, do some revisions to the plan set, all that is time.
So, so all those would have added to change orders and.
Those would have been, yes, we would have gotten eaten alive on change orders and the job would have progressed, when I asked him the question, would it be more than what we're looking at now, and he said absolutely. Cause we would have not only been looking at the work itself, but the delay associated with the work. Okay, so you get two things, you stop him because he has a question. Um, because he comes across something that he doesn't know that we didn't know, because we couldn't see it, cause it was behind a wall or behind a floor, you know, then we're into a problem, so, um, overall. At this point in time, um, we feel much more comfortable with the numbers that we, uh, that we, that we're showing here, we had, we had shared these numbers with the Board of Finance. Um. A couple of weeks ago, and then, you know, we wanted to have the walkthrough with you guys before, um, coming through and sharing again. Um, but in essence, we had, um, you know, to boil it down, we had a, you know, three point nine million dollar, um. Contract or, in our contract, I'm sorry, a, an estimate, which was again, done in May of twenty one for slightly different scope. Um, now we're looking at a total project of seven point four five two, the difference of which is three point five. We added a fifteen percent contingency just to be comfortable on the difference, not necessarily the original amount, um. To give us to an amount needed of four point oh eight five.
So Tiger, so Tiger, just to. I just want to get right to the, the heart of it here. So based on my math, we're at over eight million dollars for this project, so.
All in, if we had the, if we use the, if we utilize the full contingency.
I, I added up all the numbers, right, and it's probably closer to eight and a half million dollars. What, what percent, what is the town? What are we spending on this building? If I use eight and a half million dollars?
Want to answer that or?
Eight and a half.
It's, well, he's, you know, he's.
It's actually pretty.
If he.
I don't know if that three point nine is an actual budget, so I'm just going to assume that I need a fifteen percent contingency on.
So you're adding fifteen percent to the seven point four five two?
Yes.
Instead of the overall.
Yeah.
I think that we're, like, we just, we, you know. I think we're a little bit closer as far as what our unknowns are, now granted, the five hundred and thirty thousand dollars is, um, you know, less than.
Let's not, if it's eight now, eight to eight and a half million dollars, what, what number is the town paying for this building right now?
So, Semilab, um, committed to, to get out inside for me five fifty.
Yep.
They also signed this side letter, release, the green, if more than four, five million dollars, actually five hundred thousand dollars cost over, they were sharing. No one anticipated.
They're not gonna order that.
And that kind of cost over and would blow their. Their business model, we wouldn't have it, so, not working.
Right.
They, we, we're in discussions with them to do an appropriate cost here based on what. What the patient was before we knew all the. HVAC and other, other, mainly the HVAC, which is on the town.
Right.
HVAC, the next fifty years. Oh. Beyond. What, a million five fifty plus, um. About the top of that, which had them probably.
So it's gonna be north of five and a half million dollars. So like six million. Okay, that was my start off question, which is, rather get to it early.
Yeah, I mean, it just sounds like it's what it all boils down to, is that we're in this now for five and a half million, I mean, my personal opinion is if you've given me that number when we were talking, is, I mean, I, I wouldn't have voted yes to move forward with this project. But we're in it now, so what are we gonna do, I guess, is the ultimate question before us, what are we gonna do now? Do we walk away, eat it, sell the property now, or do we just have to continue to walk into the water and throw more money at it? It's a lot to ask taxpayers, a lot to ask the taxpayers for a movie theater, and I love the whole concept, I'm like, I think it's fantastic. But I, I don't know how anybody else feels, it's just, you know, everyone's getting hit with the tax increase with our budget, they're getting their properties reevaluated this year. And we're throwing, you know, another X amount of millions of dollars for a movie theater, so I, I'm just torn, I mean, I want it, I do.
I, I love the concept a hundred percent and, and I was fully behind it, but from the beginning. I don't think that, that the, the projections and, and what the cost of what was going to happen. Was fully transparent, and maybe I missed something and maybe I, I wasn't fully on board. Um, but I, I think that we, we requested things and, and, and references and projections and, and two other facilities. And I think we kind of like highlighted that we might land here. And now we're here, so. Um, uh, you know, I agree with Mike. I still feel that this is a great opportunity in this, for, for the town to have. Um, but I do think it's a learning experience or an, a, an experience in general, that we kind of discussed this at the very forefront of the beginning of this. That we kind of discussed this at the very forefront of the beginning of this. And now we're here and there's probably minutes or whatever. Um, is that we, we think that this is a great opportunity and, and great for the town, but. The, the cost and, and, and this is, you know, was, was discussed upfront of, of a concern. And now it's here, now they're asking, again, I support it. I, I support this initiative. I support the movie theaters. I, I support everything. I think it's gonna be absolutely amazing. Um, but I do think that there's a lot of people that are sitting up here that we discussed uh, that this might happen and now it's here.
Excellent.
Yes. Uh, may I say something?
Hold up, yeah, hold on one sec. You're up next, Christine. It's Kim, Kim now.
Yeah, I concur with Mike and um, Luke and also Mark's calculations are kind of shocking. Um, and I, we do, you know, want a movie theater. I understand that. A lot of people want it for their kids and things. But I'm wondering if we could get a second opinion. Um, if we are necessarily, Tiger, you're looking at me like.
Trying to figure second opinion on what? I was waiting, that's all right.
The doctor and they say you need surgery and you say, oh, well, okay, let me get a second opinion and see if someone concurs. I mean, do we have to do this exact plan? Do we have to spend six or six and a half million dollars to have a movie theater? And I understand that, you know, there's a lot invested in it so far, but to me, there seems like there might be other options. Because I, I don't know how many people want to spend an extra six and a half million on a movie theater, even though they want a movie theater. Right? I mean, like Luke had said, if we had known this going in, we might not have wanted to do that.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, Christina, oh, you want to respond to that? You wanna?
Oh, the, as far as the second opinion, the uh, we're on our seventh or eighth iteration of the design itself. Um, and the, you know, the thought is that we're, we're trying to satisfy um. What Cinema Lab needs and what the town needs, right? You know, the two requirements. So, and try to utilize the building to its full potential. Um, I'm certain if you ask someone their opinion as to what, you know, they would say, oh, you know, you could do this, this or this. But it would necessarily knock down the, the utilization of the building. And that necessarily doesn't fit with what Cinema Labs um, business model is, right? Their business model envisions an entirely, you know, utilize second floor for an event space um. And an entirely utilized bottom floor. They're envisioning a hundred percent usage of the building a hundred percent of the time. So they're thinking that every single space will be occupied a hundred percent of the time. That's their goal. That's their, that's their vision. Um, so yeah, I could ask someone and someone would say, well, just knock out the second floor, knock out the second floor. It doesn't work with their business model, right? Then we get back down to having something similar to what, what bowtie was, was basically just a cinema. You know, two cinemas and maybe some concessions, you know, that.
But Tiger, you just said, is there a hundred percent of the hundred percent seats utilized a hundred percent of the time? Makes absolutely no sense.
You're using the two auditoriums, you're using the second floor and the front is a bar as well. So you have to, you have to air condition the whole building for when it's a hundred percent occupied. That's what, you know, that was the new rules that came in fact October, because of COVID to recirculate here more often. Uh, you know, the HVAC was the biggest surprise because we had budgeted four and a thousand. Kind of, kind of playing using the existing system which works, but as soon as that fails, you can't replace a free on system. You have to, you go to a new technology, which means if it sailed in five years, you have to rip the whole place to put all in the system again.
Okay.
So, so it's kind of like more sense to do it right for the next fifty years. Um, because the, the new technology on air conditioning requires a different. Different chemical, so.
I mean, I just want to comment on what Tiger said. I understand that Cinema Lab is part of this situation. But if the, the price tag has almost tripled. Then I think that it's time to reach in, I mean, the MOU with the agreement with Cinema Lab has to be adjusted anyway, because they were gonna pay a certain amount, right? Now they're gonna not be able to pay that. So I also think having a second floor that's not accessible to the public, if the public's gonna pay six thousand, six million dollars. That needs to be rethought as well. If that's gonna be a private club, so I have issues.
Not a private club, it's, it's gonna be a community space and they could address that, you know, during the daytime and, and probably times it would be a community space.
I know it's expanded twelve hundred square feet when we, when we saw that. So to me, that's even more reason that the public can go up there. But in terms of the, the air conditioning system. There's gotta be some other second opinions that we could get to see if there's any way to bring the cost down. I mean, how many, how many people have you gotten the price?
Yeah, the design engineer did the uh, did the overall analysis, mechanical engineer. Process of what is necessary, the space that we have and the requirements that are, that are per code. And at that point in time, we went to uh, our HVAC contractor and he, he gave us the price of how much that would be. You could certainly ask again that number, but I think based upon what the design engineer said and our HVAC contractor who's. Very good, because I'll, I'll say he's very good. Um, others will call him excellent, especially the uh. Um, other contractors that have worked with him, whereas his, his pricing seems to be always lower than uh, than his competitors. You could certainly try to, if we needed to shop that around, but I don't know if that would be to our, to, um, I don't know if we'd get a better number.
I think it's worth a try. I mean, this is a referendable issue. I'm not suggesting that anyone do that. But I, I would rather have us try to work it out than have it be.
Alright, so Bob, can you get the screen back up? Get Kim, I get, I'm sorry, get Christina back up? Yeah, that'd be great. That way we can see everybody. Yep, great, thank you. Alright, Christina, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I'm just, I'm just gonna go back to some of the statements that have been made. That this was a design build project. And had that been presented from the get-go, I would have asked who's managing the project. And to what uh, degree the design had been done and bid it out. Because if you're starting a design build project and you don't have the right people at the helm. It's a perfect recipe for the prices to keep increasing without any ceiling. So my, my concern is we're seeing less and less information when a project is brought forward. Than ever in the past three years or four. The amount of work that is done to present a project is minimal. And when I ask to see the plans just to satisfy myself that I haven't overlooked anything. Or no one else has overlooked anything, they're not available. And no public project should go out without being bid at least three times. And without the plans and the specifications being available to review your office at any point in time. I'm just very discouraged because this shouldn't have happened. And I think that there were a lot of statements made, for example, with the HVAC system. Yes, the HVAC system regulations change, but any licensed engineer would have had that information ahead of time and would have known to prepare for it. But when you have a team designing, sometimes you overlook the facts and you find out at the tail end of the project that you have to. Comply with them and that's where the increases in costs come in. I just don't feel that it's been a transparent process. And we're putting Cinema Lab in front of the town. I think the town should have been honestly told that this was an exploratory project, which was not presented us that. And that the town was managing the projects as designed built. So I'm very disappointed and honestly, I agree with most of my colleagues that. Had the project been presented at eight and a half million dollars, maybe we would have been better off just selling the building. So.
See, none of, none of the design changes were driven by necessarily uh, Cinema Lab. This is all structural, all infrastructure.
No, it was the committees, just some of the committee members' decisions that drove the cost up. Because they thought they could contain it. I'm not blaming the architect, I'm not blaming the engineer. And I think the, the onus of this lies on the people that manage this project from within. And I think that we have to change the structure which projects are approved. Because there's no way that the town can sustain project after project with increases that are beyond an acceptable level. This project came in with a twenty percent uh, contingency. And now we're seeing the contingency in the budget as if, you know, it was there all along. That's about eight hundred thousand. I don't know, but I don't count projects like that and we don't have a machine to print the money. We need more accountability and more transparency. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Maria.
Um, since we're all sharing our feelings here. Um, first of all, I wasn't really convinced. I mean, it sounds like a good idea to have this nice nostalgic movie theater. But at the beginning, I really, I was on the fence and now I'm really falling on the other side. I don't think a movie theater business is good for the town to be in right now and I don't think, I think it's a bad investment for the amount we're putting in. Um, you know, I kind of feel like if Cinema Lab agreed to pay their fifty percent of any overruns, we should. Why wouldn't we hold them to it? Or, you know, they should have had some way to be prepared to pay for big over. Maybe insurance or something, I don't know, but um, if they can't pay and the town has to pay. I just don't think it's a good investment. You know, we have all the um, community space coming in at the library. Do we need this space at the playhouse? And honestly, um. I think I've gone to a movie once in the last two years. I, I don't think, I'm not sure a lot of people are, are flocking to movie theaters. You know, part of me feels like, keep the facade and sell the building. Make it so that no one can change the facade. We'll keep the character and sell the building.
Mark.
I, since I, since we started talking about numbers, I, I didn't. I, I thought it was a great idea from the beginning. I still think it's a great idea. I kind of just go back to what Mike uh, touched on, which is, is there an alternative? That we can think about that makes it more palatable for us? Cause ultimately, I think it's a great project. I think it's. I mean, the building's been there forever. Um, I'm not gonna change my viewpoint on, I, I think a movie theater is good for the town. But is there an alternative for us that makes it more palatable to the townspeople? That's, I think, what it ultimately comes down to.
Yeah.
We can't say that we don't want a movie theater now when we said we want a movie theater um, a year ago. I really don't believe that. I think we need to think, you know, prudently about how we deal with the, the fiscal situation that we're doing.
I think Maria's not saying, uh, and.
No, no, I, I, I'm stating my opinion. I wasn't, wasn't, wasn't talking about Maria's.
She's super supportive. I think she said physically when it changed from now this to this.
No, no, just don't, I'm just my own, my own, my own viewpoint, my own, my own viewpoint.
That's right. I was, I was a little on the fence at the beginning. Anyway, could I have, so um, again, as we're sharing all our opinions, um. I was a hundred percent for this project. I thought there, you know, having a, a theater in town would be wonderful. Um, New Canaan Monsoons, when this was mentioned, I mean, it exploded. People were really for it. But I'm in the same boat as everyone with the price tag. Um, I think if it was presented, I, I don't, I'm not sure what we would have thought. I don't think any, I mean, some of us are saying we would, would have said no, but. Um, the fact is we weren't given, I think, an appropriate estimate for what this would cost. And, and I think, um, I'm just, you know, um, in the same camp as Mark and Mike. Is there another alternative that we could consider at this point?
That's why I suggested a second opinion, because I, I liked the idea of a movie theater as well, but like, what else can we do with it? If you could a movie theater to spend less money.
Yeah.
Working of our whole idea.
Great point, Kim.
And we had said that, I, I just recall the statements being made to us is that, you know, whether we sell it or not, we're gonna have to be in it for a million and a half. To make it ADA compliant. I like specifically remember that comment. Cause I said, I'm like, have we done comps? Let's try to at least get an understanding of what we could get for the building. And, and their comment was, well, no matter what we do, we're gonna have to present it for sale at an ADA compliant capacity. So we're, we will need to spend this money. And then, you know, now here we are. So I, it just really, this was just got way off, off mark. Uh, and that's a problem for us because we're accountable to twenty thousand people in this town. Who have to reach into their pockets now and pay an additional X amount of millions of dollars for a movie theater. And that's, that's where I'm just hung up on, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, and we all walked through the theater and it's not, you know, some, obviously, none of us are happy about spending additional money. And, and I think we, we even use the example of everybody's had experience, I think, at their house or, or apartment over the years where you. Expect a construction project to go smoothly and you don't have anything to worry about. And the first thing you do, you open up a wall, find something that you, that you didn't know about. The next thing you've opened up another wall, there's another thing you don't know about. And before you know it, your, your, even your construction costs at home, you can relate to this, a situation where the unknown is there. And we all looked at that building, walked through it. I never expected to see uneven floors, uneven, you know, we saw uneven floors, uneven structures, uneven walls. I mean, all the things that we saw in that building were, were, were surprising. But the biggest thing is this air conditioning issue in the HVAC. I mean, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything we could have done. You know, we could have blamed, we can blame the, the planning or, or whatever. But when you have an unexpected ma- massive change like that, that's a massive change. It's two million bucks, two and a half million. That's, that's really unfortunate. But we're already so far into this thing, I don't see any way out. Unless, as Kim said, there is a second opinion comes to the rescue. But I mean, what, what's that gonna save you? A half a million dollars or four hundred thousand dollars? I mean, it's, it's, you know, better than nothing. Yeah, maybe.
No, no, is there an alternative or some other structure we can come up with?
Are you talking about a different use of the building at this point?
No, I mean, I don't, I, I'm, I don't.
I mean, there's not, uh, from where, from where I sit, I mean, we're so far into this now.
I mean, here's our chief executive. What would you do?
What alternative are you talking?
I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, is there an alternative for us at this point?
If it got sold, it'd probably end up being retail space and uh.
No, no, but we, you know, go on with movie theater, but we just don't have to be the owner of the building. I mean, obviously, that's wishful thinking now, but.
Or make it just a movie theater and not dining and bars and. We don't have an operator for that, that's the problem.
You can't make another movie business alone with popcorn and Coke.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, these operators are, you know, very much into that, they, so. And every.
Well, it must not be profitable, otherwise maybe they would.
What about bringing in another vendor and the Cinema Lab, like giving other space to another vendor that could pay?
Well, another operator? Well, the, the, the point is, you know, if you know what's happening with operating right now. Right, bowties got sold and this operating is two separate entities. Joe Masters running half of the bowtie theaters. Um, a lot of movie theaters across the country have closed, so you know, there's not operators that are anxious to go into a small town. And operate a theater, they want the big boxes with five, five screens. So, you know, have a lot of choices.
What about bowtie and Cinema Lab together?
I mean, we're. That's.
I don't, you know, I think our Cinema Lab folks who are watching this, I don't think they'd have any appetite for, you know, this will be a unique venue. Darien doesn't have a theater anymore. Wilton doesn't have a theater anymore. It's gonna be a huge attraction to our downtown. It's a major economic engine for our town, fifty, fifty yard line. Um, you know, we, we spread the cost of this out over twenty years. Um, it's uh, and we're gonna have a, you know, state of the art facility for the next fifty years.
See, there's a double edged sword with that, what you said. And again, I want the movie theater. I really do. Don't get me wrong. I'm just, it's, I'm having a real tough time. You just said it. A lot of movie theaters are closing throughout the nation, right? Cinema Lab. So if, what happens when Cinema Lab is no longer there? That's ten years from now, fifteen years from now, okay?
Three years.
Three years from now, if it all goes belly up, now we're stuck with an eight million dollar building for in a, a, a one specific. Unique use, this tricked out movie theater that no one's going to. So what do we, now we have another huge property on the roll that we're taking care of. And I, I, so that's like a whole nother uh, comp uh, um, concern that I have that. We're gonna dump all this money into it and it will be really just designed for what Cinema Lab wanted. And people aren't going to movie theaters anymore. So I, you know, and there may not be an answer to that. It's just, it's another question for all of us who have to pay for it. What happens if Cinema Lab hits the road in five years from now?
We have twenty families in town, twenty four families have invested in this, in, in this business proposition. So it's not as though they have the confidence to make, to make the investment. Um, the trouble with, with put, trying to put too much of a load on Cinema Lab is they, their business model won't sustain it and they, you know, they can't go forward. So those investors expect the, the model that was presented to them. And uh, so I think there is a lot of confidence in the people that put their money up to, to be industrious in the business, so.
Yeah.
I have two questions. One is the roof isn't included in any of these.
That was already done.
That was already done. If we were to sell the building, could we keep the alleyway?
Oh, yeah.
Because that's.
We probably have to give it easement to the, to the, we only, we only. Both alleyways.
But the alleyway came with the building, right?
Alleyway comes with the building.
Downtown, it's the land.
Downtown, you're, the alleyway is actually a separate property.
No, it's, it's all contiguous.
But we could, you know, if we sold the building downtown, you only saw the footprint.
Yeah.
That, yeah, we own the sidewalks in front and we own the alleyways. We'd have to give them easement to.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is you're not, you've got a, you've got a building there that's a historic building. We're not gonna knock it down and we're not gonna, I mean, at this point. We're, we're all unhappy about this, but there's not a lot of options here. I mean.
To remind you, you know, when we started looking at renovating a police department building, right, which is an eighty year old building. It was twelve million, ten million, ten, twelve million, then seventeen million. It's turning out to be twenty eight, eight dollars.
Um, but that's also because we drew that out and because of um, rising costs. But that's also because we drew that out and because of um rising costs and materials and labor and all this. It's not just about.
That's probably.
I mean.
Rising costs, the 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 HPA system, HVAC equipment was probably fifteen percent cheaper two years ago. Everything is up fifteen percent.
The process for the building committee is far different in the process that went into the playhouse. So we have a a massive committee. We have. Third parties that are looking at architects. We have every, we have the actual police building committee. I mean, come on, you know, Kevin, we we're looking at this. We brought in all sorts of outside people to look that. And and consider multiple options, crawl up, you know, the backside of of the police building to figure out what is going to be the problems that are out there.
Scale is the same.
But the process wasn't the same. That's the.
And we also approved it at the higher level. We 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 approved this at. Half of what it is now. And now we're like. You know, a year later. And now it's more than double what we approved. It's a little different.
Well, we guys, remember, we don't even know what we're in for at the police station yet, because every time in this, every time in the history of New Canaan that we've taken on renovating an old building, no matter what it is. It costs more than we think.
We haven't even been there.
I mean, uh, the high, if you remember, I don't know if anybody remembers at the high school, when we went into the high school. Thinking that we'd spend X amount of dollars, it was unbelievably more expensive to do than we thought it was going to be.
Well, then, why haven't we learned? Because here here's the thing, if that's the case, and every single time it's double, then we are estimating wrong for these old buildings. I mean, it's, I'm getting a little angry when we say we say.
You estimate based on what you know.
Seriously.
No, wait, no, but I. Every single, you you've just given me all these examples of when we gone in. So we're not appropriately, no, we're not appropriately accounting for. That the contingency then is like, I mean, we're not appropriately can, my father's a builder, like, I get this whole thing. You you break a wall. I was, I'm around it. You break, you break a wall. There there are things that. Are um a surprise. You build that, at least some of it into what you're estimating, especially if it's an older building. You know it's going to happen. So if you present a number and say, oh, but it could be, you know, you you're not telling me it's going to be double. You you're saying, I think this is about what it's going to be. Well, it's 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 not a transparent process. If you're you're knowing it's going to be higher, there's something flawed about about this whole process. If we've seen it a number of times.
Let me just mention, Todd Lavier has asked finance to put together all of our capital projects for the past five years. Most of them have come in under budget. So, you know.
For old, for old buildings?
First time we've ever done a design build. We knew going in it was unusual. It was the only way we were going to try to make meet the hundredth anniversary. As Tiger said, if we try to have a contract, if people build it without the walls being opened up. We would have gotten killed, which would change ones because there's so much in in that building that's different than might have been expected. So.
Yes, so. That made known to the town council when we were asked to approve a budget.
Well. I guess a hundred year old buildings have surprises and I.
So if you take that two and a half million dollars out of this, what what tell us what the number is without the HVAC? What is the, what is the breakout? I know it's a, it's on the screen, but I need to hear that number one more time. Read into, read into the uh.
Two million less.
Yeah, two, well, two and a half, right?
Because the original budget for the HV was like half a million, so.
So what is, so.
Four hundred thousand, yeah, so so call it, it's just two, two, two point one million.
Yeah, so the, so the overage, if you take the HVAC out, is really about two million dollars. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think so.
And if you back, and if you back to contingency out of that. Uh, I don't know. I mean. I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find a little bit of a. A little bit of a.
Okay, there's nothing for the town council to decide tonight.
No, I know.
The board of finance in 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 two weeks, um so and the board of finance is going to have. The same kind of discussion and we have to see if there's any. Uh alternative to. I I don't think there's any savings to be to be uh this. This contract we have for HVAC systems. A lot of its equipment installation is it's a. It's, there's not a lot of savings to be found in the current budget. Um but whether there's alternative uses, uh. Personally, I wouldn't go down that route, but people have to make a choice as to whether they want to give up on the idea of a movie theater, so.
Uh, I would say, given the square footage of that building. And looking at the number, now I feel comfortable with that number. Unfortunately, it's.
Yeah.
We'll 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 let the board of finance here. Yeah, sure.
You feel comfortable with what number?
I feel comfortable with the detail of of what I'm looking at. I mean, to think of a a massive HVAC overhaul. Yeah, that's a, that's a fair number. So it's not like. I I, you know, it's a lot of this stuff's very transparent, you know, it's materials that are. Out there, you can pretty much figure it out and figure some labor. I feel very comfortable with the budget. Unfortunately, it's now eight million dollars.
I I think we'd be. It's 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 awfully tempting to. Well, it's obvious that we're going to say we don't like spending more money, so that everybody agrees to that, right? It's awful tempting to say, well, if you could just do this and just do that, but more likely than not, the only real. Meaningful choice you have is to abandon the movie theater concept and sell the building. If you don't want to do that, you kind of have to be. Accepting of reality. You know, the the the, these are the numbers. What what do we can certainly try to refine them in value engineer and do competitive bidding and all that stuff and that. You know, maybe they get knocked down. A little bit. But you you know, i- if you're going to make, if you really want to make a decision to get get off of this new number. You you can have to think big and be aggressive and do something. Meaningful of the, you know, these little. You can have better bidding. I I'm all for that, but it's not going to change the.
I I I agree with you, Tom.
Are there any areas that haven't been looked at? Like, could there be more surprises?
Down to the brick.
Were you on the, were you on the tour?
No.
It's 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 naked open now. Naked now.
Are there at least lessons? I mean, so even if we are where we are. Is there anything we can learn from this as we go forward? Because we have another project coming down the pipe that's also. Where, you know, way over a a budget as well. I just feel like, does this give us? Elm Street. Twenty twenty.
Uh, two twenty.
Two twenty Elm Street, yeah.
No, two two twenty Elm Street was actually.
We got, it doesn't matter. The point is, we have, we have more than one project that is above way, way, you know, above what we had originally approved. So I guess I'm also just looking for. Is there a better process? Is there a better thing we can learn from this for next time as well?
I think we've been in the same situation. For us to get to the detail and numbers that we have here, we would have to come in, break open the building, and at that point in time, you're already.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that. It's almost like anticipating all this. If we know we're dealing, a- a- anyway.
You could put in a hundred percent contingency for old buildings. But but what's that based on? How do you come up with? How much is enough? How, you know, you you budget on what you know.
But you know, it's, yeah, anyway.
Yeah. I I would just mention, you know, if if we do four million dollars of bonding rather than one million, we anticipated. That's two hundred thousand dollars a year in in credit, in that service cost, right? We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars plus revenue. So it's not as though, you know, we have a shortfall. But it's not as though. We're not going to carry the building for twenty years and then we own it outright. And we still are getting rental revenue from, so it's not, you know. You can look at the four million dollars to a point.
So the process from here on out, we're going to go, this is going to go back to board of finance and then it'll come back to us again. It has to.
Go back to the board of finance.
And I, Luke, uh, Luke, we'll say hello, but um we've got a long way to go on this, so, you know.
No, I I I appreciate it and I understand that this is all a bit of a shock to everyone. But I feel like we've been um. Good to our side the bargain. Um, we also want this to operate and be successful and to be something that's in town for. I don't know, a hundred years. And uh we have given. Money that we can handle. But if there were any more. We would be affecting our ability to actually build success. And I don't think that is in the town's interest, and I don't think. That is in anyone's interest. So I like to think that our proposal. Was was pretty fair. Um, but anyway, I I am. I appreciate you all uh giving it some uh so much attention. And obviously, we're just pretty excited to open this for for the end of the year.
Thanks, Luke. All right, so. Board of Finance is next. Any other questions? Very good.
No question.
No questions. Thank you. We're still going to say thank you, Tiger, even though we're not really.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you. Thank you for uh. All you're doing. All right, next up, item number five, uh audit committee appointment process discussion. A discussion regarding the process of appointments for the audit committee. All right, so this is um. We talked about this a little bit um. About. Being a little bit blinded by the fact that we have a s- a a committee called the Audit Committee who serves underneath the council. Uh, we are, that's our financial arm, if you will, and. We've talked about a little bit about how. This is our committee and I've I've heard from some of you that say. We should be in the process earlier. And I want to hear from you about. The possibilities of looking at that what what is considered to be sort of a blind spot in the ordinance, which is. The the council is getting um. Candidates for this committee. Without any input prior to populating the committee and that's, that's a concern because of checks and balances that should be out there. And. Um, I'll I'll open it up for a comment, but uh we we have been passed um. We've been passed a candidate which we can vote on. Uh, we could vote on on our next meeting or we can send this to the ordinance committee. For a look as far as do we want to have? Input in this process sooner. Uh, going forward, so. Um, I'll open it up if anybody wants to speak and uh I'll take any comments and suggestions.
What's the past practice been?
Past practice has been, we've done, we've been involved in the search of the original founding of the Audit Committee. And have had a say early on. In populating it. So that's, so far, that's been the the practice. We weren't consulted at all in this process and it's gotten all the way through the process to us. So the question is. Given the fact that it's a committee underneath the council. Does it make sense for the council to have a say? And vet candidates prior to. Going through the whole process and then coming back to us. So, you know, as it, as it stands right now, the Audit Committee was formed by the council. We populated this Audit Committee. And now we've sort of let go of that responsibility. So that's really the question. In play right now.
I did the original ordinance with Kathleen Corbett to create an audit committee, then we put it into the charter. So it's not just a committee anymore. It's a charter committee. So when we change the charter, we can maybe change change the process, but I don't think the ordinance can change the charter right now, so.
Well, so that's the question, you know, we. We would like to discuss the idea of doing that um and whether or not if if we can't. If it can't go back to subcommittee and we can't do that. Then we'll just proceed as 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 uh requested, but. I'm of the opinion, because of the checks and balances, and if you recall, I was the chair of the board, the ordinance committee at the time. And had a lot to do with getting that thing through and a lot to do with populating that thing. And and we reached out by phone. Called Bill Perret. Hey, Bill, you know, this is what we're doing.
Bill is on.
Yep, I see Bill. And, you know, we we were, the council was directly involved in putting folks on our. Committee, on our committee.
I don't look at that, you know, I was.
Well, I I listen, Kev.
Town council at the same time. I don't view it that way.
I I I I completely understand how you view it because you you. Went right around us. And didn't consult me, never, never, ever consulted me or anybody on this council and you brought us. Through the Board of Selectmen and you just arrived here. It's our committee. It's our committee and that's all, that's all I'm going to say.
It's a town charter committee.
I understand it, but this is different. This is very, very different than any other. Commission, committee, board. This is the town councils committee. It's not.
It it's a town charter commission.
I I I, can I get that? I totally get that, but the way we structured this.
You could have formed a a a town. Town Council Committee. And the selectman would not have made appointments.
Yeah.
But but under our charter, all appointments are made by the selectman.
I get, listen, I'm not disagreeing with that point. Uh, what I'm asking the council is, do they want input on this committee that's I feel is incredibly important? Or do they just want to receive? The candidates going forward. For the re- for the rest of time, basically. Because that's really what, that's really, I have no issue whatsoever with the candidate. I have zero issue. What I have issue with is the way this was handled. And the process with which this was handled, because this. It's the council. And the Audit Committee is the council's financial arm. And we have no say whatsoever in the process.
You do have a say. You 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 vote on on an appointment. That's the way the process works, the selecting.
It's not the, it's not the way the process should work because there should be communication from your. Let me finish. There should be communication from your office to us about how this is going to work and who who are you considering? Here's all the candidates. We had none of that. Zero. And it it gets old to to have the end around on stuff like this. I I'm and I've reached a point where I I can't do this anymore. I mean, I just. I'm getting frustrated. So that's why I am bringing it out here and I'm bringing to the council and I'm letting letting a discussion take place. So.
Dave, it's uh Bill Perret. I don't know if um. I I'm in a uh a meeting. Dinner meeting and I saw I stepped out because um I was kind enough to be told that this this process was going on. And so I just really wanted to say two things. I'm sorry about the background noise. You could tell I'm on the street. Um, number one. You know, I think the town. Has done a terrific job at establishing the Audit Committee. And I'm privileged to be on the Audit Committee. And um. The the process is that the Audit Committee does not select. People to be on the Audit Committee. It comes up really through the first selectman's office, et cetera. And um. You know, however the committee gets populated. What we really care about is vetting. The individual to make sure that they're knowledgeable. About accounting, that they could be a good member of the committee. And if they are CPA, that they are a licensed CPA. That they're doing their CPA requirements and that they. Um, are um complying with the public accounting. Uh Oversight Board. And so I, just for the record, I want to make sure that everybody on the town council and anybody else who would be listening or looking at this. That personally, I feel that, you know, we have terrific members on the town council. We've been fortunate. I'm sorry, yes, on the town council, but also on the Audit Committee, terrific members on the Audit Committee. And that um. You know, your discussion is is not about the members that are on the committee. But future members of the committee. And that's sort of why I joined the call to to sort of underline that. How the town selects members going forward is really up to the town council. It's up to the first selectman and all the bodies in town. Also, you know, I've heard some members of. Town council and others talk about the independence of the committee, if the first selectman appoints them and so on. You know, that 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 really isn't the issue at all. Uh, the members of the Audit Committee, as you all know, and could attest to based upon our. Into the into working together. Are totally independent. If you want to change the process for appointing members, that's fine. We will make sure that we're totally independent as we go forward. But I also joined the call to to say that this. Discussion. Is converging, is coming about because of. Um, individuals whose names sometimes get floated as well. And I think the town would benefit. Of having a process. Where, you know, we solicited volunteers. And we also um vetted volunteers in a more formal process. And and right now, it's um. I'm not quite sure how it works, to be true, for the um both for the Audit Committee and also for any other committee in the town. You know, Kevin or others might be able to educate me on that. I haven't asked that question before. But that's something you should think about. And then also, I just also wanted to make one final point with respect to some of the candidates to be considered right now. Um, you know, I think we need to be. Careful to understand. That um individuals that are being considered right now have come through the process that's in place. And that those individuals um are, at least from the committee standpoint. Are qualified from a PCAOB standpoint, from a certification stand, from a licensing standpoint. And so on. Um. So I just, I I thank, thanks for listening. I just wanted to underscore. That the town council and who was ever involved, you know, way back when, did a great job establishing the committee. Committee is totally independent of everybody. I think Kevin could attest to the fact that we push back on him, you know, quite frequently and quite often. Uh, on important issues. Uh, but he never, he never tells, you know, he never tries, he he knows he. on important issues, but he never, he never tells, you know, he never tries, he knows he can't direct the committee, and he never tried to do that, and I just want everybody to understand for the record that, you know, there's no question about the integrity of the Audit Committee, the appointment process. What you're really looking at is, what's the right way to go forward, and that's a fair discussion. So I've said my piece, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Bill, and for the record, we never, ever would question the integrity of the Audit Committee.
No, I know that, Steve, even I've talked, I know that 100%, yeah.
Yes.
But you also have to be careful about them. You know, we are where we are, we have to be careful about the personalities and the individuals who's, you know, could get hurt in any process that we change. And also, I know Tucker is in the meeting. You know, Tucker and I communicated earlier today, and I think she told me I could serve another three years after I complete this year. And, you know, if.
We actually circulated the terms around, so everybody has that on the email.
If that's correct, which I have no reason to believe is not, I would be honored to serve for one more term, it's a terrific opportunity for us to be involved.
That's nice, appreciate it, thank you so much.
I'm gonna sign off, thank you.
I'll make one other point.
Sure. Is there a question?
No, we're good, Bill, thank you, thank you for joining. Penny's got a question, Penny, you have a question there? You're muted.
Thanks, I wanted to make a comment, picking up on one of the points that Bill made was he used a plural with candidates, and I think that is really what our concern is, is that there was not a plural either from what we understand was initially considered, discussed, and then brought to us, and so if that is our point, you know, that we would like it to be a broader base, I mean, given the community in which we live, we have, I would imagine qualified candidates all over the place, so, you know, one candidate is not necessarily the most appropriate candidate for the commission. And secondly, I think we should be recognized that we were having this discussion this evening on the process for the express purpose of highlighting what our concern is, and secondly, not putting out for further discussion any, you know, particular individual, so that we are protecting the, you know, that person's reputation and so forth, so we are very sensitive to that.
Thank you, Penny. Kevin, you got a point?
Our practice, our has been our Town Committee used to have an active role in selecting candidates.
That's correct.
Right, so the Republican Town Committee, function on this, a function on before. I don't propose that we part from that process, you were on the Town Committee, I was on the Town Committee.
I agree.
So, you know, I think we have to follow the process we have.
Well, and that's another point, is that I like that process followed too, but the process this particular time happened in reverse, it went through the Board of Selectmen, and then it went, hold on, let me finish my point. It went through the Board of Selectmen, and then it went to the RTC.
No, no.
Well, I beg to differ.
No, no.
So I just, I just, I just want the process to be in place going forward, the way it should be, the way it should be.
And I checked with the Republican Town Committee before we made this nomination, right?
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right, so.
Can I just say, so now what is the process?
Well, I mean, first of all, we have to check and see, as Kevin points out, if the way, if this is an un-editable ordinance at this point, and it's strictly in the charter, then then a candidate that's brought forward has to be voted on. But if we can change the ordinance to read that the council has input in candidates going forward, I guess we could check with Ira, I have no idea if we can do that or not, then we can take a look at this and be fair to the council going forward, and that's, that's all we're asking for here, is get a process in place and follow it, because right now, it's not being followed. So that's, that's where, that's where I am, I don't know.
Steve, I still think that we have to vote on the candidate that's presented to us.
Not tonight, though, it's not.
Yeah, we're not, not tonight, because it's not on the agenda, but.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any downside to having better collaboration with the Town Council, especially with the Audit Committee appointments. I don't think there's any basis to not bring at least the Chairman, Vice Chairman, the head of the minority party in on it, to have that more collaborative discussion, I don't see any downside to that, it didn't happen here, but my opinion is, is just there's, you're never gonna lose anything by having a, you know, more collaborative process.
Yeah, the Chairman of the Council's mentioned in the ordinance once or twice, and it's, you know, I, from a personal standpoint, I feel like, you know, I'm at the, there's a 99 yards here, and I'm asked to get involved on the one yard line, I mean, you know, it's just not the way it should work.
And we wrote, I'm sorry, I just had one thing. It happens so infrequently that the board changes and turns over, so I think, you know, I'm always for a process, I think that helps continuity going forward, so I agree.
I think, Steve, you're putting in a predicament that you are brought into the one yard line, and I don't think that's fair, given, and I think there's a lot of collaboration in process procedure that happens that may or may have not been followed, but I think that there's, you know, extremely talented candidates that are looking to apply for positions that the process of procedure shouldn't arrive at your desk on the one yard line, because your input and your value add is so, so significant that, you know, if we collectively support somebody, that I think we should support them and provide them the best course of success forward, and if we don't, then we don't. But I think we should do that, and I think there's a really good collaboration all at the the desk here, but you should not be put in a position that it's last minute, but I think I think on the opposite side of that is, I think there was a lot of well thought out candidates and positioning to get you there, I think that we just didn't follow the process and procedure, because if we did, I think we would be in a position to nominate someone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Penny again.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, the process actually occurs also with appointments to the Board of Finance. We are the final vote on those candidates, and we are supposed to interview all of those candidates prior to them being presented before a Town Council meeting, so that we have the ability to really understand the qualifications, that it's not a, I'm gonna use the word political, thank you for your commitment to the party kind of thing, if that ever would, you know, be someone's thought. But we haven't been able recently to even have those interviews with possible candidates. It could be our fault in not following through on it, and just assuming everything's fine. So we need to tighten up our part of the process as well. But given the number of candidates who are possibilities out there in our community, I think we're selling ourselves short in not taking advantage of knowing what the possibilities of that talent coming to serve our town.
Thank you, Penny. All right, anybody else? I haven't looked over in the side, so, sorry, I've been looking this way. All right, so I guess that going forward, obviously, we're not gonna vote tonight, but going forward, we will have the, I'll actually reach out to Ira and see what his opinion is on the council and the process. And if, if his answer is that we, if we have to follow the rule as stated, then we'll put it up for vote, and we'll vote at our next opportunity, and whenever that is. But I'll ask him, it's not gonna be tomorrow, so it wouldn't be until our meeting on the budgets on the 5th, I think, we can vote then, or Tucker, what's the next meeting after the 5th? 19th, okay. So either the 5th or the 19th, we'll figure that out. All right, that's it, what else we've got? Yeah, right, absolutely. Come on.
I was vetted.
Well, you need a mic, though. Either one, that's fine, that's fine.
You know, there's a lot of, in my mind, misinformation, okay? First of all, I was asked by you back in 2012 to come to your subcommittee and answer all the questions on how to form an Audit Committee.
You were, you were in the, you were in the birth stage of it.
Yes, I wrote a memorandum to Rob Malazi outlining how an Audit Committee should be formed, yes, I won't get into why Rob Malazi, but the people he put on there, I mean, the CEO of Deloitte Touche, another managing partner of Deloitte Touche, I mean, you can't get better than that. But when we thought that Ed Kangas was gonna step down because of health reasons, I was vetted and put forth by the RTC, and I sent the paperwork, and then I was asked for my resume, my peer review, my fill out the application, and the Vice Chairman of the RTC, who was Bill Gardner at the time, was headed a nominating committee. So when my name was vetted, he then spoke to Kevin and Nick, Board of Selectmen, and I had discussions with them, and they said they'd support me, 2018. Thank God, Mr. Kangas recovered, and he stayed on the board. Well, I've been in conversation with Bill Perret and everyone else since forever, and technically, in their mind, I have their full support, I would be the heir apparent. The RTC reconfirmed at their prior, at their last meeting to my support. I went through the process, I was vetted in 2018. The Charter C5-27 states that the candidate shall be shall be vetted by the Board of Selectmen, they will vote, and after that vote, it will then go before the Town Council, and you have to be approved by the majority. Seven votes, okay, nowhere in the Charter does it state that the candidate has to appear before the Town Council, or the Board of Selectmen has to go before the Town Council, before the Board of Selectmen vote. The Board of Selectmen didn't choose me, the RTC chose me, and they all knew that Bill Perret wanted me. For someone to say that there's numerous candidates out there in this town is a falsity. I want you to show me a candidate who does SEC work, has been inspected by the PCAOB three times, and we know that the big four don't even pass PCAOB inspections without being sanctioned and fined. I passed all three times, nothing, no comments. I'm not peer reviewed by the state. I'm peer reviewed because of my SEC work by the National Peer Review Committee of the AICPA, national, they are tough. They're not a rubber stamp. At times, you're on the phone for three days explaining everything. Okay, I always passed. Okay, I was attacked, as you know, when I was going for Town Council, because the same, you know, character assassination, I don't mean to go there, someone said I wasn't a CPA in the state of Connecticut. I mean, the state of Connecticut got so annoyed at that, that not only did they come forth and say he's licensed, they gave me a Connecticut certificate forever, for eternity. In my mind, if you want better vetting, which I think was done, or you want the Town Council involved in the beginning, then, I suppose the Charter should be opened, and you should go for a Charter revision, and then have the public hearings, and have the council vote on that, but to ask, to have that done retrospectively is unfair, and I don't even think, I don't want to use the term, I don't think it's legal, because the Charter states, it's right there, how the process worked, then the process worked that way. Yeah, so even if it's changed, if you open the Charter, okay, that's prospective. You can't go back. Plus, I believe there was a candidate, a female. She, she was presented to the Board of Selectmen, and then she was approved by the Town Council, I don't know the history, but I understand that she stepped down and her husband took her spot.
Yeah.
The Town Council did opine on that before the Board of Selectmen voted on it.
No, we.
So why the change?
So we were involved in, we were involved in finding most of the candidates for the committee, and my point, Roy, isn't, there is nothing wrong with your candidacy, zero, what I have the biggest problem with is the process that we have set up has a big blind spot in it, and that's, that's all I'm pointing out, so, and the reason we got here was because of that blind spot, not because of you, because of the blind spot, so that's what, that's what we're dealing with, and once we've solved the blind spot or figure it out, we'll have our answer, and, you know.
But the point is, it's unfair, because we followed the Charter,
Yeah.
and a statement was made that I wasn't vetted by the RTC, which is the process, I was, twice, okay?
Yeah, but that was, so, Roy, again, we don't need to argue about your candidacy, your candidacy is perfect, and the fact that you were vetted in 18 is great, and the fact that they just vetted you Monday night, that's great, everything's perfect. It's not that, it's the way we got here, that's all. And it is, as I said earlier, it is the Town Council's committee, and that's what, the way I believe it was set up, that's the check and balances we have in this town, and if the Town Council doesn't have an input as far as who's on this committee, then something is definitely wrong.
But you do have.
Well, we don't, well, we do, we do, but we don't have it until the very end. And that's, that's the blind spot.
But then there's a fault in the
That's correct.
C5-27, but you can't hold that against me.
No, no one's holding anything against you, we love you, baby.
But it's relatively new, right, that's a relatively new, it's like it hasn't gone through so many cycles.
This is the first time we've run up against this, because when we originally put these terms in place, everybody that was originally appointed is still on it, I mean, Bill's still on it.
That's what I mean, like, I think it's, it's just, you're highlighting the fact that the process needs to be refined
Yes.
going forward.
I'm all about inclusiveness, I want to be included, that's all. Okay, I want this council to be included.
I appreciate you giving me time to express my opinion.
You got it, Roy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Penny, again.
Sorry, I'm not sitting there, but it's really interesting to be listening to this dialogue. Often, what happens when you write a document, or in this case, an ordinance, until you actually have had it come into practice, you don't have surfaced where the vulnerabilities for either misinterpretation or not covering completely what the intent of the document was, and I think that's, this is what's being manifested here, is that we are seeing some weakness that we should have caught when we wrote, you know, the ordinance, and consequently, that is why Uh, and consequently, that is why, um, we will be, you know, addressing, um, the possibility of charter revision, even though it's only seven years after the last one, is that we did have some serious recommendations and we need to step back and look at those and say, did we do, uh, our community, uh, a, a disservice? Or was it a service? Do we need to do more? And so you have an opportunity, um, to step back and look at what your actions are and prove that they were indeed, um, as thoroughly researched as they could be, should be. Or maybe there's some vulnerabilities and I, I think that's what we're seeing with this is a vulnerability has popped up.
Can I make a point that I believe there's been two, this is not the first time. There's been two prior.
We can hear you, Kevin.
This is not the first time, Penny. This, uh, we've had two prior vacancies. I took the Democratic Town Committee's recommendation. We didn't clear with the town council before we brought it. We, we voted on it as a DTC recommendation. That's our history. So. But what, but we, we identified those candidates. We had a part in identifying those candidates. Well, that we differ on the, we differ on the, the opinion then. And I don't think, I don't think I'm wrong on this. I really don't. So I, I usually don't get upset about things, but when, when you, when you mess around with process, that's when I get upset. That's, that ticks me off.
At the time, so you don't know the facts.
I was, I was on the town council and I was chairman of the Bylaws and Ordinance Committee and everything that we did came through me. So this is a check and balance that I think we need. And I'm just asking, I'm going to ask Ira, is this the right way to go? If he says that you can't do it, we can't do it. And then we go to a vote. And I completely get it, but boy, have we exposed a giant weakness in this, in the way this is set up. Okay. All right. Committee reports. Bylaws and Ordinance Committee, Tom, what a nice segue to you.
Can't follow that, Steve.
Uh, you've got, um, you've got utilities, right?
Yeah, I'm hoping, so I'm hoping we can have a, uh, Utilities Commission, our, uh, Bylaws and Ordinance Meeting on the fifth, the six o'clock before the, uh, next town council meeting and um, I'm hoping that we can move that Utilities Commission proposal along pretty quickly. I'm an optimist.
Yes, you are.
Good. Uh, let's see. Hillary.
That, what Tom said.
Okay. All right, uh, education. We heard from, we had fifty eight questions. So are we caught up?
I think we're caught up.
Yeah. Just a, just a quick note that Scholarship Fund Color Drop was really, um, successful. That was a great event on Sunday.
That was super fun.
Were you there?
Oh, yeah. I was there too. Right, right before church.
Beautiful day.
Yeah, gorgeous.
Great fundraiser.
Great fundraiser.
All right, finance and government. Mark and Maria, anything? Right in the middle of budget season, so probably not.
No, we're, uh, but we're going to talk about the salaries that we have to set for the, for the four positions.
Yeah, that's
Tomorrow, tomorrow there will be something on your la, on your laptop, sorry, tablet, your tablet. Um, that we put together and there'll probably be some other information. So it, it might be best for all of you to hopefully see it before the meeting starts so that you're not scrambling, looking at the numbers.
Great. Thank you. Uh, infrastructure utilities, Christine and Penny, both out there. Anything?
Nothing. I think Tiger's got his hands full.
Yeah. That's an understatement. Christina, you okay? That was a yes, it looks like. Uh, Lanius and Rec, Robin and Luke.
Uh, parking wreck's been busy. Let me just send the report to everyone.
Want to give us some highlights? Are you, uh?
You don't think we have an appetite? We always love listening.
Yeah, we love your reports. Come on.
Uh, I'm going to try to do highlights. I'll send that to everyone. Uh, the main thing was already posted or in the newspaper was that, uh, they're worried about lifeguards at the Steve Bank of Pool. There's a tournament at the Disc Golf Course on April twenty second, the first in ten years. If you don't know where it is, it's across from the Steve Bank of Pool. Uh, talked about the way the conservancy, um, the agreement with the town is that conservancy will typically match money given from the town dollar to dollar. Did, 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 I'm trying to think of anything that's highlights. Uh, flagstone around the patio has now been repaired, so it's ADA compliant. Uh, fireworks are July first with the rain date at the second. If those don't work, it's the eighth and then conservation, um, Tiger did say that the pull-up parking looks like it might go through on, we're going to six old Stanford Road. Uh, the state is going to let know the issue now is whether the town will lease the land from the state. And, uh, but they wanted a maintenance agreement, which they would get. So they, so Tiger thinks it looks good. Uh, they talked about some things at Bristow, but of course there was some vandalism in Bristow, so now they have to go back. Uh, such as the pavilion, the cedar shingles already go on, but now that has to wait. Um,
Such a shame.
And, uh, I said, I'll send the report though.
Great. Thank you. Uh, public safety. Mike, anything?
Nothing going on. I can say, quiet.
Rita? Good. Uh, the Kinnel Library, Mark and I, um, one thing, um, and actually Kevin was at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast this morning and mentioned this, but the, uh, library, the new library became a gathering place when the fiber optic network was cut and, uh, there was about thirty five people waiting for them, but for, for the doors to open, because you can imagine a busy Friday, you're home, you're ready to, to zoom and, and you don't have, uh, coverage. So that was a big deal. And actually they handled, they were able to handle up to five hundred visitors, I believe, all zooming at the same time before the network, um, bogged down and, uh, you know, that was, that was, it was really, uh, a testament to what's going on over at the library, because everybody thinks of that place when something goes wrong, that's the first place they go. So uh, they've got a redundant system, I guess, that helped, uh, get through that. So.
The cafe's open.
Cafe is open. Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, they're doing a nice job over there. And then the seventy nine, uh, building is probably about four weeks away from, uh, demo. And, um, that's about, that's about it. At the library, but they're still, they're still rocking over there. Um, on the, um, back to the, the clean and mild, did, did, uh, you have any information about that that you want to get out there? Do they have it? Are we doing that again this year?
Yeah, we're do, uh, well, yeah, that's Kathleen Holland's doing it. Um, I believe, I mean, he clearly already has a press release to go out. Um, yeah, so that's already gone.
April seventeenth through the, that weekend. Right.
Is the town still doing a team? For Yeah. Well, the town council might be able to put a team together for a little bit of a mile, maybe.
This is our mile right here. It's just rappers, the people and wetlands.
I have grabbers from my kids. My nurse.
All right. Uh, so we're back here tomorrow night, same time, same channel.
Steve, I have a question.
Yep.
Can you give an update on the, um, nineteen eighteen library?
Oh, the nineteen thirteen?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, uh, nineteen thirteen is progressing. You've seen the windows out of it. Um, the moving will happen after the seventy nine building comes down. You'll see, um, Wolf Movers is going to come in, but they've got to do the site work first before they can move the building. So they're going to see site work done, um, a slab installed and then they'll be, they'll move the, the nineteen thirteen building back on the, on the site so that they can continue to do the site work.
Are they doing a basement under it? They're full?
No, no, not right. And the, the plan right now is just to move the building onto a slab. There was no, there's, you know, limited funding and obviously the size of the building doesn't afford a very big basement anyway. So the cost of building a basement uh, didn't make a lot of sense to excavate it and then finish it and everything. So they're going, they're planning on putting on a slab.
And they're going to put the equipment outside?
Yeah. So all the utilities will be dug to the building and the plan is to get the building moved, have the utilities in place and then seal up the building, you know, until they can figure out what the next steps are.
Who's funding this?
The library. They've, they've got funding for it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that, that's all, that'll, that's all in motion. I mean, that's all going to happen. So um, you know, unless there's, that, unless there's another change down the road, th- it's all, it's all in the works. I mean, everything is planned out. And hopefully by the end of the probably be October, November, you'll see some of the plantings even going in before the winter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. And even motion to adjourn.
Well, it's
Oh.
Were they?
Oh. Sorry. Um, so one, just one last housekeeping thing and, and that is, and I kind of broke the rule tonight because I, I did raise my voice a little bit, but we're, we're hoping that, uh, it's the evening before opening day of baseball. And I'm going to use an analogy, the Yankees and the Red Sox, I'm a big Yankees fan. Yankees and Red Sox wear different uniforms and they, they go on the field and they, they kill each other when they're on the field. When they're off the field, they don't. So hopefully we can continue to try to be as nice to each other as possible. So that's my little pep talk for the evening on the, on the eve of the baseball season. So even though we're Yankees and Red Sox, need to work together. All right.
Agreed, agreed.
Yes. Agreed.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Tom and Mark. All in favor? Thank you, Penny, and thank you.
Yep, absolutely. See you tomorrow night.
Okay.